Meeting of the Manhattan City Commission. This is a legislative session where we do vote. And in the beginning, the first thing on the agenda is to do the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd join me, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing on the agenda are proclamations, and we have three this evening. The first is National Tourism Week and Bridget Everett Day. Second is Poppy Day with the VFW, American Legion Post 17, I think, yeah. And third is Mental Health Month, and Pawnee Mental Health Services is here. So we'll start with National Tourism Week. And so if I'm going down to the microphone, so if you're related, connected to that proclamation, please join me at that microphone.
And also, the Everett brothers and members of the Convention and Visitors Bureau Steering Committee, we'd like you to come forward as well, if you're here.
I don't think I've met you. You look like an Everett.
Ron, pleasure. Nice to see you. Nice to work.
To get started, the first proclamation, I'm sorry, I need to read him. So let me give a few minutes. So whereas travel, meetings, recreation, and great hospitality reflect the future of travel in Manhattan, Kansas, and our community's economic prosperity, and Manhattan has inspired talent such as Damon Runyon, American newspaper man and short story writer best known for guys and dolls, and Del Close, American actor/writer best known for coaching comedians influencing improv theater. And whereas Manhattan has launched Bridget Everett, star of HBO series Somebody Somewhere, now in its second season, set in Manhattan, Kansas, Bridget is a talented singer, comedian, and actress forever grateful for her upbringing in the Little Apple. And our hospitality and tourism businesses represent small business and are the fabric that make Manhattan memorable. Whereas visitors enjoy Manhattan as the gateway to the Flint Hills, experiencing the Flint Hills Discovery Center, the Sunset Zoo, the Bill Snyder Half Marathon, and multiple running events, zip lining, hiking and biking trails, hunting, fishing, golf, water parks, and many offerings of Kansas State University, Big 12 sports, and especially during the holidays, the Festival of Lights celebration. And whereas Manhattan represents unique and memorable offerings with scenic drives, with breathtaking views, exceptional dining, shopping, winery, and breweries, whereas the future of travel and tourism will continue to drive Manhattan, Kansas, and is vital to move us to a more prosperous future. Now therefore, I lend a Morse, Mayor of the City of Manhattan, Kansas, to hereby proclaim May 1st through the 7th as National Travel and Tourism Week, and May 3rd today as Bridget Everett Day, and urge all citizens in Manhattan to join me in this special observance.
Yay! Thank you.
Sorry, I'm in the show business. I like to have the microphone right here. I don't know, I was hoping we'd be second so I could rip off of what Poppy Day people said because I'm not sure. No, 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 I'm kidding, I'm kidding. I just, I can't tell you how I'm so honored to get this proclamation and to have Bridget Everett Day and to have so many people that are special and important to me here, my brothers and my agent and everybody. And I just, I really appreciate that Manhattan has opened up and let us use some landmarks in our show, and we want to make a show that everybody feels proud of, and we'll continue on in season two. You know, I love, I'm born and raised in Manhattan, and there's so much special here, and there's so many beautiful places and the people, and there's complexities, and we just are really honored to get to showcase some of the beauty and some of the very special things that make this the Little Apple, and happiness, and whatever else you want to call it. So thank you so much, we really appreciate it. Thank you.
It's wonderful. Thank you for coming, we appreciate it. And Karen, Everett?
Yes, Bridget, I have something for you.
Is it a gift certificate to the chef?
No.
Okay.
You had your time at the chef today. We have a basket of goodies for you, but we want to thank you for making travel and tourism really special in Manhattan. Today, as you saw, the community embraced you, welcomed you home, we welcomed you home with open arms, and it was such a delight to do so. So in here, we have a few little things that are memorabilia's of your special day. Something as you visited your childhood home.
Oh, wow!
Something as we ate our way across Manhattan. So, says visit Manhattan. But also, we really want to thank you that as you have put your show together, Somebody Somewhere discovers the Little Apple, Manhattan, Kansas, made and designed by your brother. But it's really not, it's really not a-
It's for me at Christmas.
It's really not an apple leaf, it's something for your dog as well. So you will find in here all the things that make Manhattan unique, the things that our visitors, when they come to visit Manhattan, whether it's Johnny Caw, whether it's football, whether it's a trip through the Flint Hills, you're going to find memorabilia, specifically Christmas time, the Festival of Lights, you're going to be reminded of this unique place that you call home.
Thank you so much.
And we hope you know that as you tell others the story about how special Manhattan is, you do your part in driving visitors to our community. So with that, Bridget, thank you.
Let's all meet here in the Little Apple, and we'll party.
Yeah, there you go. Thank you, Bridget.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Bridget, I can tell you that you make us feel special here. So thanks for coming and letting us do this for you. You bet. The next proclamation is Poppy Day, and if you'd like to visit with Bridget out in the foyer maybe would be the best spot? Yeah. Yeah, I mean, you don't leave, we'd be glad to have you stay. The next proclamation is Poppy Day, and Dana Pierce and Nora Chase, I think, are coming. Huh?
Angela Coleman's coming also.
Okay. I can't hear. Please come up. Angela?
Angela Coleman.
Angela Coleman, yes, good. All right, if you gather with me. Hi there. We met the other day. Whereas Lieutenant Colonel John McCray wrote the poem In Flanders Fields during World War I, and whereas Anna Gurin of France and Moynah Michael of Georgia worked hard to initiate the sale of artificial poppies to help orphans and others left destitute by the war and enlisted the help of the American Legion in 1920. And whereas the VFW adopted the poppy as its official memorial flower in 1922, and America is the land of freedom preserved and protected willingly and freely by citizen soldiers, and the millions who have answered the call to arms have died on the field of battle. Whereas a nation at peace must be reminded of the price of war and the debt owed to those who have died in war, the red poppy has been designated as a symbol of sacrifice of lives in all wars, and poppy, the poppy itself continues to serve as a perpetual tribute to those who have given their lives for the nation's freedom. And whereas the American Legion Auxiliary has pledged to remind America annually of this debt through the distribution of the memorial flower, donations of these artificial poppies have helped countless veterans and their widows, widowers, and orphans over the years. Now therefore, I lend a Morse, Mayor of the City of Manhattan, to hereby proclaim May 7th as Poppy Day, and ask all citizens to pay tribute to those who have made the ultimate sacrifice in the name of freedom by wearing the memorial poppy on this day. Thank you. And if, you know, you're the president of the American Legion Auxiliary, and you are-
Nora.
Nora Chase.
You have to talk loud.
Nora Chase.
And you are the princess?
Mm-hmm.
Poppy Day princess, okay.
Hi, I'm Angela Coleman, I'm the second vice in charge of poppies this year, but we are very proud of Nora, and she has some words she'd like to say.
Hold it so you can. You have to yell, Nora.
Hello, my name is Nora Chase, I'm the daughter of Robin Christie Chase. My great-grandfather, Robert Chase, was an Air Force Army veteran during World War II. My grandfather, David Chase, was an Army veteran that served in Vietnam in 1970. In 1970 to 1971, I am honored to be the 2022 Poppy Princess for the American Legion Post 17 Auxiliary. Let me tell you the history of the poppy. The wild poppy which grew on the battlefields of France and Flanders was a one-touch of beauty that survived the terrible destruction of the First World War. The poppy flourished despite the bombing and the landscaping on which it grew, and its brilliant red color was a sign of hope and reall'd in those who survived. Soldiers of all nations began to regard the poppy as a living symbol of the sacrifices that were made by the fellow soldiers who served and died in all wars. Today, the poppy provides a way to honor the fallen soldiers by giving service to the living victims of the war. Wearing the little red poppy gives honor to those who have passed and provides assistance to living veterans. Did you know that more than 25 million poppies were made by disabled veterans each year? Making poppies is a blessing to the veterans. It enables them to earn poppies and gives them something to do and something to think about. It helps pass the time in a contributory and meaningful way. There's no price to accept a poppy, however, all donations are gratefully accepted. The memorial poppies are handed out by the American Legion Volunteers Poppy Day, and contributions received are devoted entirely to rehabilitations and assistance for veterans and their families. I would now like to pass out poppies tonight to honor all veterans. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. The next proclamation is for Mental Health Month. Robin Cole and And Anne Brown, I know. And we have a photographer.
Yes, we do.
Mr. Cole.
Yes.
Okay. Whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and whereas prevention works, treatment is effective, and people can and do recover. And whereas each business school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen share the burden of mental health problems and have a role in promoting and supporting mental health efforts, whereas all people face challenges in life that can impact their mental health, especially following the last two years of a public health emergency. Now therefore, I lend a Morse, Mayor of the City of Manhattan, to hereby proclaim May 2022 as Mental Health Month in Manhattan, and call upon businesses, schools, government agencies, healthcare providers, organizations, and citizens of the city of Manhattan to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, its relationship to a strong, vibrant community, and steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health, and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions. These are long sentences. Okay. Let me do, thank you, Robin.
Thank you.
And you're welcome.
Yep, thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor and Commission, for proclaiming May as Mental Health Month. We have seen an unprecedented increase in the demand for services, and I think that a lot of that has to do with the circumstances under which we've lived for the last couple of years. I also think that part of that is just because of the public awareness that proclamations like this and other public service announcements have had on people's willingness to seek services when they need them. You know, we always recommend that people start with natural supports, and so first place is to talk to family and friends. And if family and friends can't provide the kind of support that you need, then the next step is to talk to extended natural support, such as schoolteachers, clergy, primary care physicians. And then at that point, if what support they're able to offer isn't adequate, then to reach out to trained mental health professionals. So again, thank you, and we appreciate you making this proclamation.
Thank you, I think it's our pleasure. We need to recognize the mental health needs in our community, so we appreciate you coming, sharing your evening with us. Thank you. Thank you. It's not a proclamation, but I would like to welcome Stephanie Peterson as the new director, I think, still the title's the same, Director of Community Development. This is her first meeting, and we're delighted to have you here. Welcome. Yeah. The next item on our agenda is public comments. And those wanting to make public comments not related to an item on the agenda can do so at this time. Those on this, if you signed up, those on the speakers list that signed up online, there wasn't anybody. If you haven't already signed up, please state, if you come to the front, please state your name and address for the record, and for those listening and watching this evening, each speaker will have five minutes, so. And typically, the commissioners, this is, do not engage, this is an opportunity for the public to speak to us and those listening at home. So please, someone come forward. I think there's several of you. Okay, there's no one. Oh, we have one, good, all right.
Good evening, Commissioners, staff, and those who are in attendance, as well as those who are able to view this through the technology. My name is Gary Oles, I live at 3308 Frontier Circle. I don't really have anything uplifting to say. I have a great concern, I hope that I'm representing hundreds, if not thousands, of residents of Riley County and specifically Manhattan. Commissioners, property taxes are going to go up significantly. June 1st, you will know how much more revenue you're going to have based on the current mill levy, and it's going to be significant, probably more significant than it's ever been perhaps in the time that Ron's been city manager, just because of the increase in appraisal. I'm talking about keeping the mill levy flat, as is honorable, but in this case, boy, it's going to hurt. In my case specifically, $450 are going to come out of my pocket to pay property taxes. Now granted, you get a third of that, so we're only talking about whatever the fraction is, but I think it's important for you to realize, because this commission oftentimes talks about things like affordable housing, yet this commission, by even keeping the mill levy flat, is going to have a significant impact on affordable housing. Because I assure you, any landlord that gets a bill for property taxes that goes up, they're going to raise their rent. That's reasonable, anybody would. That's about 60% of the dwellings in the city of Manhattan. 60% of all dwellings are non-owner occupied. And of course, as I mentioned last week, 45% of all parcels in Riley County are tax-exempt and pay no taxes. That's a pretty heavy burden, all of you are aware of that, I know you are, because you've been in your position for a long time, and you're very astute and pay attention to those things. As I recall from looking at my tax statement, you all raised the mills by, I think it was 5.8 according to my statement, and I think that translated into, I don't know, maybe not quite $3 million. But there's going to be approximately a 10 to 15% increase in appraisals in the city or the county, depending on how you look at it, which is pretty significant. You're going to have millions of more dollars to spend. Well, I'm just here to inform the public, which may not know this, because it hasn't gotten a lot of publicity from the Mercury or other medias, is that June 1st is the date that you're going to get from the county appraiser, or whoever gives it to you, what the actual total appraisal is. And with, between June 1st and June 15th, as I understand it, and if I have the facts incorrect, please correct me, there has to be a public hearing that you have to hold, unless you intend to cut the mill levy so that you have neutral revenue. Now there's not a single person in this room that believes that you're going to cut the mill levy so you have neutral revenue, because of course you have expenses, and you, you know, you have these salaries that you're going to be talking about later, you have the cost of gasoline that's completely out of control, as well as any other fixed expenses or overhead expenses. I'm here, hopefully, planting a seed as you get into the discussions of budgets, because we know the departments that have already, they're already aware of the increase, they're already aware of the money that's going to come down the pipe from the taxpayers, and they're going to build it into their budget. They do it every year. It's just natural, it's part of the budgeting process. But I just want to encourage you, encourage you to really take a good, hard look at the revenue that the city is taking from the taxpayers, because every year, it creeps up a little more and a little more and a little more, to some degree understandably, but this year, it's going to go up. And fortunately, I'm in a position, right now, $450 isn't a big deal, but my in-laws just moved to Manhattan, just bought a house. They're okay for a year, because they just bought the house, but a year from now, when that appraisal continues to increase, they're on a fixed income. How many people are on a fixed income in Manhattan? How many people are going to be affected, because as the taxes keep going up, and you're only a third, granted, the school district's a third, the county's a third, as they continue to go up, how many people are going to say, "I can't live here"? Of course, a lot of people already figured that out 25 years ago and started moving to Potawatomi County, so they don't have to pay the city taxes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oles. Is there someone else that would like to speak to us this evening? This is the public comment period. Okay, seeing no one, I will close the public comment period. The next item on the agenda is the up, pardon?
Is this the only time we can-
No, 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 you'll get your chance.
Well, on a topic, yeah, if you want to speak to a topic. Okay, thanks. So the next item on the agenda would be Commissioners' Comments, and so Commissioner Mata, do you have comments? Commissioner Butler? No? Commissioner Ready?
Yes, I do. Over the weekend, we had the League of Kansas Municipalities Conference here in Manhattan. There were, it was very good, very well-attended, and there was a lot of communities that have a variety of different government, I guess the way they do their meetings, some of them have a city manager, some doesn't have a mayor, some, so there was a lot of conversation. It was great to see everybody from other communities. We had communities everywhere from 200 to 300 population, to Lawrence, who has much more than we do. So it was wonderful to have them here in Manhattan, have those discussions, and go over our governing body policies and handbook, so it was good to see all of them, so I'm glad they chose Manhattan to have their conference. And I just wanted to say, all of you are aware that we have the Aggieville Garage completed. It's free for a little while here, so if you are visiting or going to any events, lunch, dinner, whatever it might be, take advantage of the garage, see what you think about it. The entrance, you can only enter through Laramie if you come off of 14th Street, and it's kind of blocked on the other side from Manhattan Avenue, but I highly suggest you taking advantage of it, so you know where it is, and that you don't have to search for parking everywhere right now. And it's really nice, especially if you go through the alley, it's a gorgeous alley, it has all these historic relevance photographs and such, it makes for a good, good visit. So those are my comments, and hopefully you take advantage of everything that, in downtown and in Aggieville, that we have going on the next few weeks, graduation and everything else that's happening, Mother's Day. Thank you.
Mr. Hesel?
If, I'm not sure if anybody else was going to mention it, but the, since the press release for the Flint Hills Discovery Center, Flint Hills Festival Saturday came out, I'm not sure, I haven't seen a lot of information about it, but they are doing a lot of fun activities on Saturday from 10:00 to 5:00 p.m., live music, activities for kids, wine tasting for adults, and so come on down to the Flint Hills Discovery Center. I think the weather's supposed to be pretty nice on Saturday from 10:00 to 5:00, and check out the exhibits and join in fun.
It was a pleasure this evening to welcome Bridget Everett. That we don't, that doesn't happen very often, so you are here for a special event, and you probably see some news coverage of it, that'll be exciting, too. I, too, attended the League of Kansas Municipalities Conference that was here in Manhattan at our convention center, and it's the first time I remember them being here. It could have been some 10 years ago, for all I know, but it was a great conference where cities come together and they talk about things we have in common, because otherwise we're just a little island here in the middle of Kansas, so it's good to talk to one another. I'm the representative of the Manhattan City Commission to the Flint Hills Regional Council, and we have, the regional council has just hired a new executive director, started a week ago, his name is Jerry Lonergan. He has a wealth of experience and history, and he's really going to hit the ground running. He knows a lot of the people he needs to know already, so I'm excited about him, about his taking the position, and hope that you have the opportunity to meet him. The regional council is seven counties, and every city and county in the seven counties pays dues and has a representative. And we accomplish good things. We work closely with Fort Riley, we know people, the representatives at K-State, and it's nice to get to know some of the city and county commissioners from Morris County, Lyon County, Wabunsee County, Junction City. It's the only place I really ever get to see the Junction City City Commissioners, for example. So it's a, it's a good networking opportunity for us. And with that, I will close the comment period. The next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda, and we will now, let's see, go back a page. We have a number of items on the Consent Agenda. The items on the Consent Agenda are those of a routine and housekeeping nature, or those items which have previously been reviewed by the City Commission. A City Commissioner may request an item be moved to the end of the agenda for more discussion. Does the Commission have any questions or comments on any of the Consent Agenda items?
I just want to comment on a couple of them. You know, Item D is an item for professional services, and basically, we're going to try to upgrade the intelligent traffic control system, which in my mind is not too intelligent right now, and the plan is to get that fixed, and that may help with some of the little traffic tie-ups that people are concerned about. So I think that's a, that's a great project, and we need to get all that integrated, and we had a, you know, we're going to vote to accept, you know, Olson, I think, to get that put together for us, and I think that's a great step forward. And the other one is, you know, grants, we've got federal funds exchange, and maybe somebody can explain that, I'm not sure everybody's going to understand what that is. I mean, basically, we're going to end up with $687,000 plus, but what does fund exchange actually mean?
So normally, the funds that cycle through, their federal funding that cycles through the state, traditionally, those can only be used on state routes, and so the state, over the past decade or so, have allowed for- have allowed for broader use of those funds through an exchange program. So for a fee of 10% of those funds, going back to the state, we can use them on local roads, not just state roads. So that's what the exchange rate, and it allows us a lot more flexibility to utilize those funds off-system, if you will.
Okay, and that makes, makes a lot of sense. And then the details, I think Public Works is planning on using those funds on a couple of projects, or the Grand Mirror, you know, Roundabout, which is a series of potholes right now. So that's a, that's a good investment on those funds. And then I think on Fort Riley Boulevard, so. And I think those have to be spent within a year, so that's going to be moved up here pretty quick. So I, I think that's, that's a good thing.
Yusha? No, Mark? I'd like to just call your attention to the development agreement with USD 383. And Manhattan, we will be developing storm sewer and trail improvements, and you can say sidewalk, along Hayes Drive, along the whole frontage of the school district's transportation center there. And so we get sidewalks incrementally sometimes, as we're able to work out each piece of property, because it's, it's a puzzle. We have to put it together. And the other exciting thing for me is I am thrilled, these are things on the other side of town we covered earlier, but the, the Brick Street right beside the library, where you dive and rise, and that, they're going to fix that. So it may be a year, you know, it takes forever. It's a K-dot, usually a K-dot project, right?
We're applying for the grant.
We're applying. I have every hope.
We haven't got the money yet, but we're making a good stab at it.
And then there's a sidewalk along Fort Riley Boulevard by Westwood, from Westwood West, that we're going to try to put a side, East, Westwood East. We're going to try and put a sidewalk in there. It's going to call for a retaining wall. So there are some good things happening, and these are lower-budget items. They aren't the high ones, but they're funded, a lot of them are funded by grants. So, let me see where I am on the text here. At this point, if there are no commissioner, further commissioner comments, I'd like to open the public comment section for the public. If you'd like to comment on any of the items on the consent agenda, this is the opportunity. Seeing no one, and there were no speakers who signed up. Let's see, is there a motion?
Mayor, I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second, okay. We have a motion and a second to accept the consent agenda as presented. All those, oops, Brenda, our city clerk, will call the roll.
Mayor Morse?
Yes.
Commissioner Hattasal?
Yes.
Commissioner Ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Mata?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have the general agenda. And the first item is to consider the first reading of an ordinance amending the Manhattan Development Code. And John Adams, the senior long-range planner, will be making the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the commission. John Adams, senior planner. We had hoped to just wait a year after adopting the MDC before coming back to you with a host of amendments. In the first couple of months, we discovered a few omissions, inadvertent ones, that we had made. Some people were counting on getting some things done. So we thought, okay, we'll bring a small set to get these out of the way for you and get them corrected, so that these people can develop in the way we intended for them to do. First up, institutional office used to be a use that was allowed, and it was an existing use. It got left out, so we are restoring it, and we're putting it permitted in the zoning districts it was permitted in before. We have a standard set of conditions that is included when it's in a conditional, when it is a conditional use. And we restored the old definition. We didn't change that. Building coverage, we had a lower building coverage because we were looking at incentive program to get, to encourage cluster development. That eventually was abandoned, but this number was never changed. Again, we're looking at the forest, and we sometimes miss, miss the trees when we're doing the MDC amendment. So we're putting it back to 35%. Drive-through restaurants were permitted uses in the community commercial, which used to be the C2 district, I believe, before. We are restoring them to permitted, instead of having them as conditional. And not only that, we also have development standards for drive-throughs that we never had before. So there's no reason they can't be permitted outright. We had parking setbacks for non-residential districts that were, again, something that was left out. We want to put them in so that they are restored. Driveway throat length, this was an idea that we borrowed from the MATS, the Manhattan Area Transportation Strategy codified it. After a couple of small uses in residential districts came in and said, "We want to redo our parking lot," we looked at that and said, "Oh, well, there's no reason for them to have that driveway throat length. They're on a local street. They don't have that much traffic that's going to back up." We got a waiver for those from the city engineer. "We'd like to make this more solid. We'd like to have, be able to just say, 'Go ahead. You're fine.'" The bulk regulations, this is for the ability to grant exceptions. We only name bulk regulations for residential uses and types. We are, we forgot to include commercial, bad, bad in choice there. So we're just restoring basically the provision that we used to have before. And we have two in the hopper that are, have applied for exceptions. So provided that this is passed, then they can go ahead and proceed. If it doesn't pass, we'd have to pull their application. I'd be happy to take any questions.
How long will the driveway throat be?
It depends on the categorization of the street, how much traffic generation there is from the site. And, but those are the bases for it. In this case, there is no driveway throat length requirement. It's going to be dictated by the parking lot setback.
I'm thinking of those apartments or condos on South Reith, off of Miller Parkway. And where you can't even park, you can put one in the drive, one in the garage. You can't really even park one out in front of the driveway without blocking the sidewalk. Is that, I mean, is that going to, that kind of a situation, is that going to improve?
This wouldn't, well, not for existing development.
No, I know, for future. You're not going to allow that again, is my point.
For individual, this is for lots over a certain number of parking stalls on-site, so.
This is a large.
Right. So, one, Reith is a, I think is a collector's street, so that does not get this waiver. I can't remember what the standard is.
It's a local street off of Reith, but anyway, I won't believe it. I appreciate, thank you very much. I'm, we're not communicating. I'm not communicating it well, evidently, so, okay. Do other commissioners have questions?
Yes, so I don't, I'm not, I think I understood everything you were saying, but when you talked about community, commercial district, some of the things, this may or may not pertain to this, but earlier we were having a discussion about Starbucks in Aggieville, and how the traffic, the line, just continues back. And you know what I'm talking about?
I do.
And it just extends, and it's become a nuisance, for lack of a better word, and kind of traffic congestion and stuff. Do these ordinances, does the MDC take care of some of those issues to be not so congested? That's such a congested area because of the demand for Starbucks, but, but the planning was very poorly done.
Well, we're hoping that the new standards for stacking that are in the code will take care of future scenarios like that. The other thing, too, is that in the Aggieville District, new drive-through uses are not permitted. So the existing ones, as long as they stick around, they can continue to stay there.
So this is grandfathered in, but in the future, there will not be drive-through ones, is that what you're saying?
That's correct, yes.
Yeah, because I think, you know, there was conversations about how to handle that type of thing. But Aggieville becoming more populated, more dense, I think that's something we really need to look at. I know some of the other areas in town, I mean, coffee is the end thing. So wherever we have a coffee place, there seems to be this traffic. So I don't know if we can designate it for how coffee shops specifically are there. Because I don't see that for restaurants, or even McDonald's, or any other fast-food restaurants even. But for coffee, it's, it's, I don't know. I don't know what it is about coffee, but everybody needs coffee, and they stay in line and.
So consider greater stacking distance for the coffee shops?
I don't know if that's even possible, but I, I just see that everywhere I go. That seems to be where it is. So I don't know. But just as we think about these in our planning for some of these commercial district, to make sure there isn't that congestion as they're driving into anywhere, any kind of drive-through. But you just said it's not so in Aggieville, but maybe in other areas as well. Because we're seeing it now also on that, on that Starbucks where that bank used to be.
Yes.
Anderson, off of Anderson. Thank you.
Sure.
Are there other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, John. So at this point, we would be available, we would encourage public comments. Does anyone wish to come forward and talk about the proposed changes to the development ordinance? Okay, thank you. Okay, is there a motion?
Yes. Mayor, I would move that we approve the first reading of an ordinance to amend the Manhattan Development Code as presented in the staff report and recommended by the Manhattan Urban Area Planning Board.
Second, okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Seeing none. City Clerk Brenda Wolf, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Hattasal?
Yes.
Commissioner Ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Mata?
Yes.
Mayor Morse?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. The next item, B, is to consider approving the amended 2022 Salary Ordinance Number 7573. And the presenter this evening is Jason Hilders, it appears.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. As you mentioned, this is second reading. At first reading, we went through quite a series of information and analysis. This evening, the, the motion from the last meeting indicated they'd like to see an implementation plan. This is primarily for the, the top 15 identified within the pay study. If adopted this evening, we would look at a mid-year 2022 implementation for the organization at $20,000 and below. It would be a full implementation. Then over the next 18 months, we would stagger or phase in the remaining 15 individuals. 12 of those individuals would receive their mid-year adjustment in 2023, which should basically be 12 months, essentially, from the implementation phase that we're talking about this year. The remaining three individuals then would also receive an adjustment in mid-year and beginning of the year 2024. We show a total phased implementation of 20, 2.5 years, and that is when those three individuals will actually realize 12-month implementation impact. So the first time you would see those salaries, as Mercury and other media outlets do on occasion, it would be January of 2025, before that full implementation effect of those salary increases or adjustments would be realized and reported to the public. Everything prior to that, it would be part of a phased plan, as we've indicated here. Again, that top 15, we talked about a couple of weeks ago, just a desire to see that phased in over time. Reacting to a lot of the comments, we knew, wanted to see that in a couple of years. This allows an 18-month process to reflect the time that this governing body is going to have with management. By the end of '23, beginning of '24, potentially, three of you would be up for election. So we wanted to get this done in that timeframe. We also wanted to show you the full impact with this timeline. Just because the salaries and the pay periods would be increased, our employees wouldn't realize that full implementation until a year after the date it was initiated. Really, that's all we had for you this evening, again, based on our comments and discussion two weeks ago. We knew the phased implementation was something you wanted to see. This is our, our stab at it, for the reasons I identified. Be happy to answer any questions, if you have them, at this point in time.
Thank you, Jason. Commissioner Mata?
Yeah, do you know what the dollar impact is? Like, how much reduces the first year, second year, third year?
I think we do. So the two, it depends, I'm going to go ahead and add in the taxes, the two points.
Yeah, I would guess it was two and a half million for the first.
Right. So the full implementation is over two for everybody under the 20. And then it's really a staggering, then, of the remaining $300,000, $400,000 for those next three adjustments, or the next two adjustments, one in a year, one in 18 months. And that, again, it just isolates it to those 15. And I think there's a chart, it might be there. It really talks about those employees between those ranges below that dashed line. And that information was provided to you previously as well.
Yeah, I was just trying to calculate that out.
Yeah. We can get that for you. But it's essential, I mean, when you look at those 15, the 20 comes out of it per.
That's the question I'll get asked. How much did this change the number?
Oh, in terms of just total impact per, yeah, timeline, we can get that for you.
Commissioner Butler?
Just, just one question to, to clarify. Now, all this is based on not increasing the mill levy. Because, you know, we've heard all these folks worried that, for some reason, there's going to be this whopping, you know, mill increase as a result of this. And I know, you know, we, we had talked over the past year that, that that's not in your plan.
It isn't. We've provided you an overview of the cushion. We've provided you with an overview of the operating strategy. We've provided you an overview of if revenues are received. We've even gone beyond the implementation for our personnel and are looking at capital improvement type of initiatives. Again, not with raising the mill levy, but looking at internal savings and watching that revenue. We have to balance that. Eight and a half million in the general fund is something I'm personally very committed to, because I really don't want to go back to where we were in '17 and '18 and '19. We're in a very good, a much better financial position today. I want to maintain that for this organization and the community and, and balance that general fund cash balance at eight and a half million. It's where we should be, again, where GFOA has us. And the total outlook and approach will be about keeping it there. It's not a matter of spend it down and then come back and ask for mill levy increases. It's a matter of watching our revenues and adjusting if we need to operationally.
Okay.
Commissioner Ready? No? Commissioner Hattasal? All right, thank you, Jason. At this point, if there's no further commission comments, does anyone?
I have one last comment on there. I mean, when brought up about keeping the mill levy flat, I think we heard comments earlier today that even if you hit the mill levy flat, we're looking at substantial tax increase. And I know when we were debating this before, I asked the question of, you know, we've heard a lot what these salaries have been for the city and the difficulty in hiring and maintaining staff and around the other things. And one of the questions I had is, you know, what would we see as, you know, a benefit of putting this in? And I think our team needs to have a plan of how we translate this big investment into benefits that a regular citizen would see. And seeing that even without a mill levy increase, we're looking at a huge, you know, tax increase, that we need to challenge ourselves, now that we're making this investment, you know, can we do a revenue, new neutral rate, or at least do a lower mill levy rate? And we've got the ARPA funds, and everyone, we get emails, everyone's coming after the ARPA funds, but what about using some of that money to help the taxpayer out, too? And, and combining that in to say, you know, we're not going to do that. A flat rate's still going to give. A flat rate's still gonna give you possibly a double-digit tax increase. So I think those were some of the things we really need to look at, uh, so we can answer that question. Yeah, we got that payback.
Eighteen mills are what we operate. The city of, city administration has control over eighteen of those fifty-one mills that the city has. Obviously twenty-eight for PD, another five for library. Eighteen mills. Mill levy is worth six hundred thousand dollars. We're anticipating seven to ten percent increase. So another sixty thousand dollar per mill. Sixty thousand times eighteen mills, just over a million dollars. That's the valuation growth we're looking at as a, as an organization. That's the million dollars I believe you're referencing in terms of what are we gonna do with that? The budget approach will have, one, with it absorbed, and two, with it moving somewhere else. Because historically, that growth gets chewed up from other entities, also within the city's overall mill levy approach. We need to get that budget from our CPD. And we need to understand what their growth is going to be on twenty-eight mills and what our growth on eighteen mills will be. But that approach clearly is something the commission will be able to give us feedback on and direction throughout the budget process.
Yes, and I agree with, with John. I mean, my, my point was, you know, we're gonna start with a, you know, flat mill and then we're gonna look at it, but, but there shouldn't be any expectation that's gonna go higher. And revenue neutral rate, I can't really come out and say I could go for revenue neutral rate because, and that'll fail to capture some of the growth. But we do need to take a hard look at it. And, and, and I agree with you, wh- while you and, you know, Ron really control maybe eighteen mills, you know, the, the commission needs to take a real hard look at RCPD budget. We got people on that committee. And we got the library that just has six mills, but you know, uh, since the amount of that mill's going up, does the library need to be doing six mills this year? And, and we need to challenge all these organizations to, to pay attention to that. That, that not, don't just look at the mill, look at the dollar amounts because that is, that is very important. Because I agree, we've got to, i- i- if we pass this, we, we've got to show a positive return to the taxpayers. That's the message I'm hearing.
Thank you. Uh, we'll now receive public comment, uh, on this item. Please write your name and address on the signup sheet. Uh, each speaker will, uh, state their name and residential address for the record. And audience members, each member, each speaker will have five minutes and must stop speaking when the timer sounds. We want to hear your comments on this item before we vote, but neither the commissioners nor the city staff will answer questions or debate an issue. Does anyone wish to come forward?
Jason just left. He made reference that you operate off of, of the fifty, uh, fifty-two-point-one-four-three mills, eighteen of the mills. I'm just clarifying. Eighteen of the mills are what the city gets to keep, for lack of a better word.
Yeah, that this.
RCPD gets twenty-something. I didn't catch the number.
Twenty-eight. Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight? And, and there's gotta be another, s- some other entity. You mentioned it last time. The library was five, six, and, okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Oles. Does anyone else wish to come forward? Please come.
Well, I just went and dropped your pen. I'm gonna guess everybody up there knows my name, but I'll go ahead and give it for the record. Monica McFarlane, two for thirteen Parker Drive. I was listening online as I was on my way here this evening. And one of the concerns that was brought up by the commission was, how are we going to relate this to regular taxpayers? How are we going to explain the increase to them in a way that they understand? And I think Commissioner Butler had made a comment probably back in fall when we were talking about operational readiness rates. And we were talking about how much the Public Works Department was down in their operational readiness rates. And I think simple facts like that, saying, hey, we're gonna have enough people to actually make sure that we have passed the mission, that we're not failing, is a very good way to start explaining to the taxpayer what your investment's going for. The people who are at this city are the ones who provide the services to the citizens here and the residents here. If you don't have people who are knowledgeable and you don't have people who are willing to stay, then those services become severely impacted. You have a lot of turnover and a lot of institutional knowledge that's been lost in the last five years. You need to retain all that you can. And I think that's a very simple way to explain to the people. Thank you.
Thank you. I think you're next.
I was just looking.
Okay.
Hi, John Ball, thirty-one oh seven, Harahay Ridge, Manhattan, Kansas. And I'll write this down real quick. I, I spoke at the first reading and I thought it was important for me to come back and speak at, speak at the second meeting and hopefully, uh, be clear on my concerns. Cause based on some of the angry staff response I got, clearly I didn't, uh, I didn't highlight, uh, my primary concern, which was the fifteen positions that we were, we were talking about. The rest of the proposal, I, I fully support. Uh, adjusting the staff, giving the, uh, uh, city manager their opportunity to be able to match salaries so that we could get, be competitive. We should never be in a situation where we haven't been able to hire a, a CAD designer for five years. We should pay competitive salaries. Uh, but I'm also, uh, and I've worked with the city staff. Uh, for four years, uh, I was a chair of Social Research Advisory, uh, Board. And I'm currently the chair of the Manhattan Urban Area Planning Board. Um, and have been on that for, for many years. And I will tell you, the city staff does a great job. So please don't misunderstand anything that I've said. The city staff does a good job. And the city staff needs to get paid a fair wage, uh, for working here in, uh, Manhattan. We need to take care of our workforce. Last time I talked specifically about the fact, positions you can't hire or turnover, we, uh, we need to hire those people. We need to pay them a salary, a fair salary so that we can, we can be competitive. We don't need turnover and we need to address that. And those are good indications where the salaries are, are, are not, uh, competitive. Um, I did caution, um, about, uh, uh, studies, in particular salary studies, about false assumptions that get made in the course of those. In particular, at the upper gra- uh, upper, uh, pay levels. And that's really what I wanna focus on, is are those the correct salaries from the study? Uh, there's a thing, first off, they are not in the same labor pool. And so to compare disparate locations and say they're in the same labor pool and so therefore should have, uh, equivalent salary, that's, that's just a fallacy. You cannot make that comparison. So just understand, they may be the correct salaries, but you have to look at what's fair for Manhattan in the laborhood, uh, labor pool we deal with. And if those fifteen jobs are constantly turning over and those other, and they're going to other jobs and we're losing that expertise, that's a good indicator that those jobs aren't being paid enough. But if those folks have never turned it over in, in twenty years, then you probably need to look at perhaps it doesn't need to go up seventy thousand dollars, uh, in the course of a year. Uh, there's a thing called bootstrapping. It's done in the public sector. We call it, uh, we call it grade creep on the federal side, where you do studies against other locations and you bootstrap or raise your salaries. So then your location is then used to be studied, so you can bootstrap others. And it's over a course of years that this is done. I would just say, just gotta be careful of that. Not saying it's happening, just be careful about it. Especially when you're looking at these top salaries. Um, COVID funds, we have, so we have available funds, uh, certainly for this pay, uh, this pay raise. I really do like the, uh, the phased implementation over the two and a half years. I think that's a good approach, uh, to do it. Uh, I would ask that when we go beyond those two years, uh, I would be concerned about mill levy increases, uh, as you've already heard, uh, those concerns tonight. I, I love Manhattan. It's the only place in my entire life I've been able to live fourteen years. Being former military, I got to stay places like two years. Uh, and so I'm invested and active in the community. I generally support and agree with most that the commission does. So, but that, when I disagree with something, I'm gonna, uh, provide my voice. I am concerned that Manhattan population, population really hasn't been growing. Our bond rating is, has, uh, has dropped. Uh, there's indicators that our, uh, our, uh, property tax and tax rates are high, impacting the other two things I've talked about. Uh, this really discourages middle and low-income folks. So, please pay the city staff a competitive wage.
You know what that means.
I know.
Okay. Thank you. Does anyone else wish to come forward? Please do.
Good evening. My name's Melissa Rundus. I live at nineteen thirty-nine Blue Stym Terrace. I'm your chief prosecutor for the city court. Um, in watching the last few commission meetings and being present at the last meeting where we talked about the pay study, I think what's come out as being important from a commission standpoint is perhaps the explanations in line at Dillon's, or I prefer to think the explanations in line at Redena's cause they're locally owned and I love visiting with people. I stand there in line twenty minutes at Redena's on Saturday. Um, so I'm gonna try to talk about that in my four and a half minutes. Here are some ideas of how you can explain adopting this ordinance and the pay raise to people in line at Redena's on Saturday morning. Yes, we did adopt a competitive pay ordinance. We updated our dinosaur of a pay structure without increasing the mill levy to support competitive pay. It's important to be able to retain and recruit talent and be an employer of choice. We challenged city staff and administration to come up with a plan to pay public servants a middle-of-the-road competitive wage and to do it without cutting services and without raising the mill levy. How awesome that they were able to do it. I'm so thankful that instead of passing the buck like previous commissions, we were able to make this happen for our employees this time. That's what I'd like you to be able to say. However, you moved that goalpost after your team made the touchdown. We're your team. We did what you asked us to do. I say we, I didn't. I wasn't in those meetings, but I know department heads were. Jason was, Ron was. HR, finance, they worked really hard to come up with a plan to give competitive salaries. Not the Cadillac version, but maybe the Ford, Ford Pinto? Is that right? Anyway, middle-of-the-road. That's all we're asking for. But you said that's not good enough. So now we need to come up with how you can justify competitive wages to long-term public servants without a raise in taxes. You still need a different way to explain that it's a good thing. The fact that it wouldn't raise the mill levy is not enough. So I have some more ideas for that coffee line at Redena's on Saturday. Yes, I know some of those raises were high. Let's talk about those fifteen raises. I still don't know who they are. I might be on that list. One of my colleagues might. I, I don't know. Again, I still don't care. It just means they've been working for the city for several years grossly underpaid. So how about if you say, yes, I know some of those raises were high, but that just means those loyal employees have served this city for several years while they've been underpaid. Can you imagine what shape we would have been in if not for their loyalty and dedication? Can you imagine being that underpaid for so long and turning down headhunters regularly at jobs in other communities where they're willing to pay you fifty percent over what you're making now? Sure says what they think of the job you do when they're willing to do that. And you have employees in this room tonight, I know, who turn down those headhunters every month, every month. You have experts who work for your city, who serve on national boards, state committees. There are awards named after them at the state level and they stay despite the pay because they love our community. So how amazing to be able to be part of the solution to finally reward that pay and that dedication. How lucky we are that they stuck it out so long. How about, I know they were large raises, but did you know our positions have been open for months and departments understaffed for years because we don't offer competitive pay? So our loyal employees have been doing the jobs of two, three, or four people working. They work over forty hours a week. These top fifteen positions you're talking about, my guess is most of them are probably salaried to be at a place where you're worried rather than an hourly wage. So they've been working fifty hours or more a week. Tammy was here last time and I think, oh, there she is. I forgot to mention her. I think she worked eighty hours a week somehow on top of being a mom and a committed community member during COVID. I have no idea how she had those superpowers, but she did it and we made it through without losing very many people and keeping services going. Amazing. So how about you explain in the coffee line that those are what your top employees have been doing for years without leaving, without taking the easier, better-paying job because they've been serving you and this community? You are in a better position to know those departments than I am and to get that information. I don't get HR information or department information. But some examples would be the HR department and the hours that they put in and the money they could have made somewhere else. The legal department, half-staff of other similar first-class cities. It's my department, so I know it well. I don't wanna harp on it very long because certain commissioners and I disagree on the amount of services they get. Wow, when I practiced at home, I got through another four pages in five minutes. I would be so happy to print them and share them with you. I've got another four pages of ways you could explain it.
Okay. Thank you very much. Does anyone else wish to speak this evening about the pay plan? Okay. Seeing no one. Is there discussion, further discussion for the, by commissioners? Mayor, I just wanna say, I think, you know, um, city administration and half, uh, and staff have worked on this diligently and have done everything in their capacity to bring pro- uh, bring forward a proposal that would be accepted by commissioners as well as the community. And I think, um, you know, Melissa was on point about what our staff does for our community. And I think this is the right direction to go. Um, if we delay it and if we prolong it to five years or ten-year phase-in, whatever it is, we'll be behind that many more years. So I, um, I, I really want to take note of all the time they put into this, this salary ordinance and this, um, the motion we're gonna be making tonight after all their hard work.
Yeah, I wanna make a couple of comments, like, cause I've been struggling with this thing for a while. And of course, I voted no last time. But I did some more study on it and had some great conversations with, uh, some of the city staff. And also went around to some of the business leaders and sat down with them one-on-one and just showed them the details of the ordinance. And here's the conclusion I've come to. First, the salary ordinance itself, you know, has a start point, midpoint, and a high end. And that's what we're voting on. We're not voting on individual raises for any specific city employee. So that's, you know, that's step one. Then step two, it's really up to the city manager to implement that. And it gives him a window. And he's gotta decide based on the people working for him, if he wants to pay them at the high end or the low end. And that's as it should be. That's why we hire the city manager. So I don't have an issue, you know, particularly with that. We, we did insist that we go into phasing. And, and I actually came up with how I would do it if I was a city manager and I shared that, uh, with Ron. And about eighty percent of what I recommended is in there. So, you know, I have, I have no complaints about the phasing. The reason that was important to me i- i- is not because, you know, some of the specific individuals, and I won't use their names. I know who they are by the positions. They've clearly have been underpaid for years. But it just wasn't, uh, acceptable for a lot of folks out there to see somebody getting a thirty, forty thousand dollar raise in one year. It's just that simple. So it had to be spread out. And I think as some of the speakers said, those. So it had to be spread out, and I think as some of the speakers said, those folks aren't leaving anyway. You know, and so basically, spreading it out, they're gonna get the money eventually, but it's not like we've got a retention problem with them. We do with the lower end, and that's why the 284 positions that get it all right up front, that's essential. That's essential. And, you know, as I would tell the taxpayers, okay, what have we accomplished through this negotiation and hard work of the staff? All right, we're gonna at least start with a flat mill levy for the next couple of years. Secondly, it's phased for the high end, because I know that just for some reason troubles people, that somebody would get a whopping raise like that. The important thing for me is, you know, I get a lot of complaints all the time about pools, potholes, sewers, water. Those are the people in my mind that need the raise. And I see them out there, you know, with ice dripping off of them in the winter when we have a leak. And so that's gonna be fixed, and I think a couple of guys spoke last time about the sewer department. And they're spot on on that. I mean, that's a job I wouldn't want, you know, from that standpoint. And everybody keeps telling us, you know, and I think Linda, whenever you're on the radio, I think it happened to you this morning, somebody's always calling about potholes. Okay? And it's like, okay, we know there's potholes out there, but, you know, Rob's got some folks that shovel asphalt, and he's got a plan, and we gotta pay those people. And that's the only way we're gonna get those, you know, holes, you know, fixed, basically. So, you know, my expectation is that, you know, the staff will continue working on efficiencies. That's part of what's in the strategic plan, you know, is to maintain efficiencies so that we can afford to pay the salaries and keep our budget within the realm of revenues without going crazy raising taxes either directly or indirectly on the, you know, what they call the revenue-neutral rate. And I guess the one thing that probably really made me decide I have to vote yes for this, besides all those things, is one of the business leaders here in town, I won't give you his name, I sat down with him a couple days ago, and he looked at the salary ordinance, the spread. We didn't talk about people, he just looked at the spread and compared it to his local business, which is one of the larger ones here in town, and basically said to me after reviewing it, he said, "This is in alignment without being extravagant." And that really caught me as interesting. This is in alignment without being extravagant. And he said that because he looked at some specific positions, and he said, "Even at the top end in this salary ordinance, we pay more than that where I'm at." And so that pretty much sold me on it, so, you know, I think we've got probably the best we're gonna get on this particular ordinance and probably the best for the city. Nothing's ever 100% the way I might do it, but I think we got a good 85, 90% solution, and so I can't turn it down based on that.
And again, kind of like when, just to clarify, when, you know, we say what are gonna be the tangible results, or what are we going to get from it? Because we've heard the turnover, the difficulty recruiting, the hit that it taken morale. If we take care of those things and fix those things, you know, does it mean a quicker response when something happens? A better maintenance, that the pools stay open longer because we have people on board and we can go and recruit and get people in? Does it mean that we have the public work staff and everyone there so that the potholes do get taken care of quicker? Does it mean we're doing less consulting fees because we can do more in-house? That's what I'm trying to translate it into. It's not a hit on someone or not an appreciation for someone doing a job and doing it well. It's the fact that you translate those problems you're solving into that tangible result at the end. That's the thing I'm looking for, or asking for, to try to explain it, which I think we should be able to do. And it's the challenge that I think we as fiduciaries have to put on the management of the team when we do do the investment, is because all those things, as you state, are real. So we want to solve those problems. But those things do or should translate to those tangible results in the end.
Yeah, the problem with the city situation has been is that the city's been living on the crumbs after everybody else gets paid. RCPD and the library and stuff, they hand us the bill. Not that the library's bill has ever been a problem, really. But the problem is, is that we have, the commission is tended to feel like we have X amount of money to spend next year, and by the time everybody else gets their hands on it, that leaves a small pile left for city staff to pay the city employees with. And so now, that we actually have some money, I think it's our turn to kind of catch that up, based on the fact that the county never seems to have any trouble paying their people. And last year, they gave a mid-year adjustment, and I don't think the city people really, they didn't get that. And the school districts got their charts, and their people get their raises every year. K-State, they probably are in the same situation we were in. But we have the money now. We asked them to do a phase thing. He did a phase thing, so there's no, we have really no reason to not pass this and move forward.
I think it's been a long COVID, is what I would say. We have, we who are sitting here, made it through. And I think that it was hard to cover jobs as people left the community and took other jobs. And we all know that the labor pool here is in pretty desperate need of more people. Every place, everyone I talk to needs to hire employees. They can't find employees, from Arby's to coffee shops to the city. At K-State, it's across the board. This is so different in that we have some money, and that's, of course, the ARP money from the federal government that has, is being, gonna be used to fund this. And it is a one-time deal. And in three, four years, we aren't going to have a cushion. And so we need to, it's not gonna be like it is this time. So we have to take the opportunity, and I'm interested in doing that. I want to compensate our employees for somewhat, for the stress they went through and performing the city services. So I think they've earned our trust and our confidence, so I'll be supporting it.
Mayor, I move. We approve ordinance number 57, I'm sorry, 7573, implementing the updated classification and compensation system as recommended by the AGH Consulting Group.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. City Clerk, would you call the roll? Commissioner ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Mayor Morse?
Yes.
Commissioner Hattasol?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners. Thank you, public. Thank you, staff. Appreciate all you do for us.
It's been a long process, I'm sure, for all of you. The next item on the agenda is C, a discussion item, to discuss possible changes to ordinances in the City Code, Chapter 2, Administration, and Related Resolutions Regarding Governing Body Procedures. Katie Jackson, the city attorney, is gonna lead us in this discussion.
Good evening, mayor and commissioners. Tonight, we continue our ongoing effort to update our administrative chapter and the procedures and policies associated with the activities of the governing body. We've been working on this since last December. We started with a training, talked about some changes then, and have continued through that process. Our goals, as we've talked about in the past, are stated here. The overall goal here is to do the updates. State laws have changed and been repealed since the '70s when we last updated this chapter, as well as in the late '90s when we adopted some of the policies we're still operating under. And the hope is that we're gonna improve our efficiency and effectiveness, and that will reduce some uncertainty about our procedures for ourselves, for staff and the public. As I mentioned, we have been working on this since December, and just as a reminder, we've, the commission has taken two prior actions, and that's the first two readings, the two readings for two charter ordinances that repeal outdated provisions related to meetings, the time and dates of meetings, the commissioner salaries, and some other items that we're gonna go over tonight. Your next steps, the thing that we want to prioritize tonight, getting feedback on and proceeding on, are the ordinary ordinances to replace the charters that we repealed. We've talked about this. Those are the priority in terms of timing, because the charter ordinances, assuming they go into effect on schedule, will be in effect June 30th. Sorry, 30th, not 3rd, June 30th. So we do have time to do that. We also have some policies that we will talk about tonight. Those policies can be changed with only one, at one night with the commission. Those are things that aren't on the same, don't have the same timeline demand as the So I've divided this, since you have a lot of material in front of you, I've divided it into four discussion items. At the commission's desire, we can stop after each one, and you can give some feedback, or we can wait till the end. I've tried to pull out the main points for you. Of course, if you have any other changes, we can talk about those as well. And I'm starting with kind of probably the least, the least amount of change with our first item and to the greater changes, that would be in the fourth item. So this is, this is a clip from your City Code. We codify most of our city ordinances in the Manhattan City Code of Ordinances. Chapter 2 is our administration chapter that we've talked about. This here, this is just a table of contents. The articles that we're gonna talk about are contained in Chapter 2. Our first discussion item is actually revising Article 4, Divisions 1 and 2. And I, again, that's just showing the current table of contents for these sections. This is all in the City Code of Ordinances, and of course, it's in your packet. There's really not a lot of substantive change here. This article will be revised to implement some of the items from the Kansas Code of Procedure for Municipal Courts that we should have adopted a while ago. You have in your packet with each of these discussion items, a draft ordinance. We're not adopting these ordinances tonight, but I wanted to give you a draft so we'd be farther along in our feedback on these. And in that draft ordinance, there's comments on every section as to what part of the code that was from or why that change was made. But this discussion item number one is redoing Article 5, and it's really just, most of the text from this is in the Kansas Code for Municipal Courts. These are the things that the code says that the commission is supposed to adopt. Some of it we have in our current code, and some of it we do not. For example, a really easy thing we do not have in here is the state law stated that the governing body has to adopt by ordinance when the court meets and where it meets. And we have not previously done that. It's, we have obviously been holding court a certain way for years, and that's incorporated in the code, in this new ordinance. So most of the changes in this discussion item, it doesn't change anything substantively about what the municipal court is doing or has done. Nothing. What it does is it updates it to the statute and adopts the things that we were supposed to adopt. I'm happy to answer any questions or take any feedback on this discussion item number one, or we can do that at the end, whatever you all prefer to do.
I'd like to do it, you know, as you go through each one. That way, we'll stay on track. But I don't have any problem with this. This is all pretty much administrative and doesn't, doesn't change much for me, so I'm all for it. No problem.
Others?
I'm fine.
Okay. Katie, I think we're fine with the draft.
Yeah.
Or the proposed wording. Thank you.
I was hoping that would be the response. There's really not much to say about that one. Discussion item number two is the, it's in the same chapter. It's Article 2, and this is where there's not as much, we have a couple points we need to talk about here. A lot of the changes in here are also, overall, they are not changing what you do, but there's a few important changes we're gonna talk about. But this, again, is a snapshot of your table of contents, the sections we're gonna change. Again, you have comments in your draft regarding the changes. A lot of the changes, as you can see, are in the existing code where they've been moved around or updated. One thing I want to note before we get into feedback is that I did eliminate outdated emergency provisions. These two provisions, one of them is a Cold War provision that talks about emergency government only in the circumstance of if a foreign government attacks on Americans, on our soil. And it's just very specific in the way it's written, and so that's really not the type of emergency government provision that cities have these days. And the second one is, talks about when, if the majority of the governing body is killed in a common disaster, who becomes the governing body? Again, these are not the kind of modern emergency provisions that cities have. We need to, we talked about this during the pandemic. We need to talk about that at some point. These provisions do not assist us. They did not assist us during the pandemic. They're outdated. I'm suggesting that we just go ahead and repeal those as part of this, under, everyone understanding that if that's something the commission wants to revisit in the future, we'll do that when those laws are, the legislature is working on some of those laws now. We can talk about it after they do the things that they are going to do. But that's one thing I want to note, that those provisions are in here, but they're not really effective regardless. Okay. So here are the key substantive changes to the ordinance that's in discussion, item number two, which I should note, I've broken that ordinance into two discussion items, because the first article is the governing body, and then the second part is the city manager, and we can talk about those parts separately. There's some pretty big things here that we do want to talk about, and I want to go over them briefly and then take your feedback. Most of this we've previewed before. These aren't new subjects for the commission to hear, but seeing it in writing is new. So the first one is a, just, it's a place to start for a process to fill a commission vacancy. You will recall that one of the charter ordinances that you just adopted charters the city of Manhattan out of a requirement that if there's a vacancy in the governing body, that a special election must be held if the position is not filled within 60 days. And you might also recall that when that was adopted, the league suggested that cities charter out of it and replace it with a provision that works for them so that you don't have a, for example, a special election right at the same time as a regular election. As we mentioned before, most cities did that. We did not. So we chartered out of it. What we have to do, though, when we charter out, is create our own substitute process for filling a commission vacancy. This is commission-only. I have some language here. Basically, it's pretty wide open, and this is how the state law was before it was repealed. And that is that basically, the commission gets to decide how they want to fill a vacancy when it occurs. That's still, that's still how it's set up. So if that vacancy occurred at that time, the commission can meet and suggest, say, here's how we want to do this. The one thing that is recommended, and I saw in other cities, that I, I think is worth considering, and I do have in here for you to review, is that if a vacancy occurs after the filing deadline in an election year, no reappointment is made in that period of time unless it's needed for the quorum. So this is a situation that has arisen in other cities where they already have, know who the candidates are, and if in, there's an unexpected vacancy in September, or someone intentionally steps down in September, that sometimes there could be a motivation for a governing body to select from the candidates, go ahead and put them in office before that election. So it's, there's quite a few cities that have this same provision. It's really just to avoid that political problem of between June and between the election that you have an issue of, because remember, you're gonna have four commissioners to start with, at least four. So you probably have, it's possible you would have a split, and so, although that's in here, you could also change it at the time. It's still within the commission's purview to change this down the road, but that is something that I thought we should talk about. So the vacancy provision, that's, we need to put something in there.
Katie, sorry to interrupt, just for clarification, we repeal those others, the charter ordinances, but these are gonna be regular ordinances that we put in. So from that standpoint, just like you said, whatever we pick the next day theoretically, if we wanted to, in our next meeting theoretically, we could change.
Correct. You have to do two readings, but correct.
Right, I know, yeah.
That's one advantage, Commissioner, of moving these to the ordinary ordinances, is that they're easier for you to change in the future. The other substantive change, again, we've talked about this, this is changing the meeting time, this, the proposal, and this is in consultation with the city manager's office, would be to change to a 6 o'clock meeting time for all meetings. And what I mean by that is that these regular meetings that now start at 7 o'clock would start at 6 o'clock, and work sessions, which are on the odd Tuesdays, they would start at 6 o'clock as well. They currently start at 5:30. One reason that we're proposing that to you, at least for consideration, is that it's easier for the public if the city meetings always start at the same time. So it's, you know, the city of Manhattan, on the first and third Tuesdays, the meeting starts at 6:00, and the same on the second and fourth Tuesdays. It starts at 6:00. It's something that's known. You don't have to do this, but this is just our thought process. The other thing that this does is, we are, we are supposed to, by ordinance, set our meeting times, and we are, and the governing body is supposed to make changes to that. We've had a charter ordinance that we repealed, that's in the process of becoming ineffective. All that ordinance did was set regular meetings on the first and third Tuesday at 7:00 PM. It has no process for moving It has no process for moving those. It had no process for work sessions. It had no process for briefing sessions. And this league book that we all have been referring to, the Governing Body Manual, says that if you don't have a process for moving those meetings, and your regular meeting occurs on a legal holiday, you have to convene that day and either do business or move your meeting. That's not, and what the league says is, don't put yourself in that position. Create a process where you, you as the governing body, set up your meetings, and you can move a meeting by majority action. There's no reason to make it so difficult. So, a few things for you to consider under the meetings are change in your meetings starting at six, and there's no briefing session anymore. That would be incorporated into the agenda for your regular meeting. And I have some examples of that that we'll, we can look at, but that, that's the proposal for that aspect. And then the last thing is the governing body salaries. We had a charter ordinance that set the salaries. You're required to set your salary by ordinance. What, you could set it in the code or in the salary ordinance. We have it set up in this draft for your consideration, that you would just put it in the salary ordinance annually. And then one thing we need to talk about there is automatic escalation. The charter ordinance did have an automatic escalation provision. It stated that every three years, it went up. It increased unless the commission adopted a resolution to refuse that increase. That is something that we tripped over this year. You might remember, we had to go back and amend the ordinance because we weren't sure of when that three years, you know, that three-year cycle is easy to lose track of. We, if we want to do an automatic escalation, what we started with is a proposal that the governing body just goes up at the same cola as everyone else. It's really simpler on the HR side. It's simpler from an administrative side. You don't even have to have an automatic escalation, I want to be clear. I put it in there because that was in your charter ordinance, and it's a point of discussion for the commission tonight. So, these are the three main areas. I've kind of briefed them, and then I'm happy to answer any questions or take any feedback.
All right. Commissioner?
Yeah, I'll give you some feedback. I like the six o'clock meeting. I mean, for the work sessions, I still like 5:30, but I can give the six. But I think for the regular meetings, I like that. I know you've got some of those sample agendas that other people have. I mean, we've had that briefing session. I really like to see the beginning of our meetings, to have a section in there where it's a free flow of commissioners talking. Because of the coma rules, it's hard for commissioners to know what other commissioners are thinking. And I'd say six o'clock, put it on the tube so there isn't any of this thing that people can't see it, and we can have a free flowing of, you know, we want this on the agenda, or here's where, you know, consensus among, you know, commissioners, which we're really not, you know, doing today. And I know we're going to talk later about the boards. I think a section in there where we can review those applications and talk about them, and show that, you know, that we have a consensus, so we know where the commission wants to go with those board appointments. And we'll let the public know that we're actually, you know, have a process, and it's not just someone appoints and they get approved, and no one knows how it happened type of thing. Those are, you know, a couple of things. And I think if we start at six, at least for me, it gives me plenty of time to get dinner before I show up.
Yeah, I agree with that. I think, you know, six o'clock would work. And instead of having the, you know, the pre-meeting that, you know, people get confused with, if we just start at six, but have the agenda changed so it says, okay, we start at six. We talk about agendas. We talk about boards. We have, you know, free commissioner discussion, and then limit it to, you know, put a timeframe on it so that it has to end by seven, or sooner, so that we can get to the main items. And then it's on camera. We've always had, you know, that discussion that, you know, people can't see it. And, and this would eliminate all of that. So, I'm, I'm in favor of, of going with that. And I think there was one other item here farther down you didn't mention, which is city manager, I think, Section 232. It says qualifications. He does not have to live in the city limits?
Yes. Commissioner, if you don't mind, that's part of discussion item number three.
Okay.
I broke that out into the second, since it's a separate article.
Okay.
Okay. So, I think we're to 16 for the replacement. Is there anything that says typically trying to insert something about, instead of just picking randomly somebody to appoint for that, I mean, we don't have a process. So, like the fourth vote getter of that election, is that something that's done in any other city? Somebody that may have been interested in serving on the city commission but came in fourth? I don't know if, like, how would you go about just appointing? Do you just have an appointment process? I don't know what that process would look like to fill a vacancy. So, I would like to see a little bit more on how people go about finding somebody. I would assume it's somebody that's interested in the position and may have wanted to do it. That's, that's what I was thinking about, if you have that fourth or fifth candidate that came in in fourth place. Or what do other community, other communities do to find that person? So, it's not just randomly selected from, from, so I want to know what that looks like.
Commissioner, I can respond. In the ordinances themselves, the cities kind of divide into two categories. And one is their ordinances are like ours, which is they don't dictate a process because the governing body determines that process when the vacancy arises, based on the vacancy. A couple of cities have a more specific process. It's usually nominating committee. That's in the ordinance. We've had vacancies occur before, and Ron could probably speak to him better, but we've had vacancies where we've done both, where we've, the governing body has decided in, in a vacancy that they're going to appoint a person who had experience because of the need to get someone in there faster, and then a vacancy where we took names. And so, the ordinances themselves don't get into that level of detail typically, and cities might take different approaches when they actually are faced with a vacancy.
I would just add that the experiences we've had, we've tended to have those towards the end of a term. So, the time for your appointing this temporary position is usually, could be six months or eight months, as opposed to if it happened, you know, just after their term, if they were in a serious accident or something like that and could no longer serve, that's a situation where you might take a different approach versus somebody that you're just looking to finish that term. In general, I know former mayor Commissioner Rich Seidler was called on twice to come in and do that, because they were both times where that was a fairly short duration for that to occur. So, there's just, it does somewhat depend on, you know, which, what commissioner, who it was, and what, how much time's left, and what are those circumstances.
Okay. So, yeah, I just thought maybe having two or three options on how to do it, so, just for future reference, because you may not, may or not be here. I don't know how that would look to select that person. I think starting at six o'clock is fine. I don't, typically, the way I always saw briefing sessions was, we're supposed to be updating each other also on what we did on certain committees that we are representing, and calendar issues, or agenda items that Ron might bring forward to us. I don't, if it's boards and stuff, I want to talk about boards when we get to board section. So, that's not something I want to discuss that for 217 at this point in, in meetings. And I would like to see what those samples would look like if we're going to have an agenda. I know the Board of Education has something like a briefing session that's also televised before their actual work session where they actually vote on items. And it's very informative, and it's more like a work session, let's say, more than a briefing session. They actually have presentations and such, and the voting process takes place after they gavel in. So, I want to know a little bit more about that six o'clock session, to make clear that items to be discussed, or whatever it might be. But usually, we're supposed to be updating each other also. And this way, we can update the community about the different boards that we are on, and calendar items, military items, other league items, or whatever calendar items that we talk about. So, I think that'd be very informative. And I think it's good to have it consistent at 6:00 PM, and making sure that all of them have the same process. Now, if we have dinner or not at six, I don't know. You know, I know when the Board of Education would eat dinner, and they're doing it, they were called out, like, you know, you shouldn't be eating when you're, you know, talking. So, that might be something to look at. Do you eat and then come, or are you going to block it off till 6:20 and then open it up for commissioner comments, or how that would look? You're shaking your head. Go ahead.
Yeah. We discussed that internally, and because it starts at six, we felt that that would give people ample time to eat dinner on their own, and that we would be focused on the business and not eat dinner beginning at six.
Excellent. Yeah. I think that's a good idea. And we would all be sitting up here, is what I'm assuming.
Correct.
Okay. So, this would be, that, that clarifies a lot for me as far as eating and things like that. And that would go until seven, and we would start a legislative session at seven.
Or before.
Go ahead.
Or before.
Or before. Oh, yeah. So, like Mark was saying, so would we start before if we ended at 6:30? Or does our, does it break out in our agenda like briefing session and then seven o'clock? Or how does that look on an agenda?
So, right now, we have determined what our agenda looks like in the Governing Body Policy Manual Resolution that was adopted in 2018. And it sets just the basic parameters for the agenda. So, that's something that we need to change and update as whatever we decide on these ordinances. And when we get to that section, which is a discussion item yet tonight, I have some sample agendas. But the questions you're asking are things we need to talk about, where you put that commissioner discussion on the agenda, and how it plays in. I will tell you just from a general perspective before we get into the, I have some samples for that part of the discussion. They're, they're fluid meetings. They're not stopping the meeting. If they have a discussion item we're commissioned, they're not, they're going straight to the next item. They're not saying, okay, we're done at 6:30. We're going to break till seven, because that's, they're just, it's going all the way through. And so, we can talk about that. I think it will be helpful to see some, how some other cities actually incorporate that into their agenda in a couple slides.
Yeah, that clarifies it better for me. So, we'd start off with the pledge then. Because at the Board of Ed, they would, they would have their work session, then they would stop, and then at 6:30 or something, they would do their regular session. Okay, so it would be fluid like Mark was in. Yeah. Other than that, for those, those, that's my feedback on the three items. Thank you.
Yeah, I wanted to, I didn't comment on that, you know, if there's a commission vacancy. I, I don't have a problem with the process, the way it's written, where we just figure it out based on circumstance. But, but I do like that provision in there that if there's an election coming up, that we just leave it vacant, so that we're not appointing somebody, you know, within three, four months of an election, because, because I hadn't thought about your comment there. That could leave room for some shenanigans, and that's a good way to prevent that from happening.
Just a curiosity question. If someone vacancy, someone dies, God forbid, or whatever, but they had a longer term, and you go into a regular election, is there like two elections then? Or, I mean, is that one position set off to the side and held as a separate election, and the other three commission spots are in their own little election there?
If you fill the vacancy, then that person just fills to the expired term. And so, it doesn't impact which positions are open for election.
Well, I'm saying you're within that timeframe for the election, but that person that would be elected is, wouldn't be up for reelection at that point in time.
Only if that position would have been up for election, but for the vacancy. So, if that position wasn't going to be up for election, then if that position, if that person
Okay.
was not up for election, then the new person who replaced that person would just continue to the end of the expired term. If that person who left office was up for election, then that same person who was replacement will also be up for election.
Okay. Yeah. See, I wasn't thinking of it that way. I was thinking more of not doing it because of the expense of a special election, with the idea being if there already is going to be an election, why would you have the commission do it? There's no extra cost. Let's just have the public decide.
That is part of it too, Commissioner, actually. I mean, that is one reason the league recommended it, because the statute is clear that you would have to have two elections potentially.
Right.
And so, that is an aspect of it. But the other issue is considering how your appointment would interfere with a slate that's already.
Right. You would have to have two elections, but conceivably, you wouldn't have to pay for a special election.
It, it would depend upon how it fell in relationship to the scheduled regular election.
Yeah. Because my thinking was, well, if it fell in through the election, it's not special. There's no harm, no foul. Let the person run for reelection. I'm glad I actually asked the question. I didn't realize that part. So, if that term isn't expiring, then it doesn't fall under that because it's within that election. So, okay. Good. Now, I understand what you're saying.
Mark, if you want to.
I don't want to, don't need to say much, but yeah, I'm fine with the six o'clock thing. I'm fine with just the commission determining what process they want to use. And I would leave the three-year thing on the salary thing in place for now. But yeah, that idea of being able to vote it down when that three years comes up, leave that as an option, I suppose.
And if we, and Commissioner Haddasall brought up the escalation clause on the salary. And so, that's something that we did repeal as part of the charter ordinance. But we, but you're right, we need to discuss that. The current charter ordinance increases every three years. We can put that in the ordinary ordinance, which I understand that's what you're suggesting, is that. And we can also put in the ordinary ordinance the same thing, where you can reject it by resolution. That's fine to move over there. So, I guess if any other commissioners have comments about escalation, I'd appreciate hearing those. But that, it sounds like what Commissioner Haddasall is suggesting is just use that provision from the charter ordinance and move it to the ordinary ordinance.
I'm okay either way. I think our salaries, what we receive, the compensation we receive is so low anyway. So, you know, if it, if it mirrors this, the step in, the raises that the city employees get, it's still minimal, because it has been $25 every three years, I think. Is that what it's gone up?
Per month, every three years. I think it's $20, actually. Is it 20? 20. Yeah, it's $20 per month. So, in your annual salary.
Every three years, we get a $20 raise. So, I don't think it matters what one we pick. Whatever is the easiest for our HR. So, we aren't, they aren't spending a lot of time.
It's, it's in Section 10 of the salary ordinance that we just passed, which has the specific amounts. But I, I think any, you know, what Commissioner Haddasall suggested, can't we just put it in Section 10 of the salary ordinance, and we approve that every couple of years, and we should be good to go?
Yes. And that's how it's currently written, Commissioner, is that the salary ordinance will set the, would set the amount. But what I was asking is if you want an escalation clause in this ordinance, so that when we prepare the salary ordinance for you, we have guidance on that, you know, then we, it's predictable. We don't have to do that. We can just simply address it in the salary ordinance also. We don't have to. And then our ordinance here that we're talking about today would simply say that you'll set it annually, your salary annually. That's, and then we don't even have to address the escalation clause. And that's the feedback I needed from the commission.
That'd be fine, that'd be fine with me.
Yeah. I think just putting it in the salary ordinance and removing the escalation's fine. Okay. Well, got that one settled. I wanted to ask about, on page one, it says four commissioners constitute a quorum of the governing body. It's under 2-14. That's what it is now. And so, is there any need to change that to three? Can we, is there a time when two commissioners cannot be, ever be here? Have we ever encountered that? Or do we just, when two are gone, we cancel?
Let the city manager address that.
That's, that would be the case. And, and I was trying to think, so in the, the original quorum of four, was the majority of quorum, or the quorum of four was in the charter ordinance? Did, are we moving that to the normal ordinance?
The charter ordinance states that the quorum shall be four unless the governing body adopts a quorum of three by ordinance. So, actually, the charter ordinance had an option in there.
Okay.
And that we do need to adopt. We're required to draw, adopt our quorum by ordinance. So, we need to put whatever quorum this commission desires in this ordinance. It will, because the quorum will be repealed with that charter. But the current charter ordinance said four as a default.
Right.
But three was an option.
So, so one of the things you might consider, and it, it's germane to the discussion of replacing the commissioner, because if you drop to four and you decide to keep it vacant, and somebody's gone, you can't meet. So,
You can never be.
You might, if that happens, in conjunction with that decision, you might change your quorum back to three if you had four.
Yeah. But I, but I think, you know, with the Zoom thing now, and electronics, that even if somebody's gone, you know, unless they're incapable of getting to a computer or an iPhone or an Android phone, I mean, you should be able to beam it in. So, I don't see that as a problem. I'd just leave it at four. If we didn't have the ability to do it electronically, then I would say we need to move it to three.
Okay. Yeah. I do think it's, it's important to have four, just to have a, a discussion. I, I think, and yeah, we've made so many available ways to be part of the, a meeting. So, I think just for pure discussion's sake, it would be good to have four people present. But that's not to say if you're in a meeting, like to notice something. That's still only three. Will you be covering electronic meetings later in a presentation?
Yes.
Okay. We won't talk about that. So, okay. So, we're basically saying we want a quorum to be four. Continue to do that. Okay. That has been a discussion in the past. I do support the six o'clock start and the seven o'clock. And I, I just see it as being one continuous meeting. With, that separation has caused us expense, having to give extra notices to, because we've, you know, just the clumsy way it works. So, I do support, I want to do what's efficient with that. With regard to salaries, I support the salary ordinance. The, and I don't, I, I, so, the briefing session, I would envision it typically being at six o'clock, and the main meeting starting at seven for legislative meetings. But a briefing session would be But a briefing session would be, um, a, a work session would just commence at six o'clock. Is that what we're, other people are, how are you interpreting what we're saying?
So the briefing session as a separate meeting will be eliminated.
I understand.
So the work session, I think if you're referring to on the odd, so these are the non-legislative meetings. Those would also start at six o'clock on, on the, um.
Both meetings would start at six.
Correct.
On the night of the legislative meeting. I, I agree about the need for the commission to have more informal talk. And I would envision that starting at six o'clock. And, and then flow into the regular meeting.
But there was no time cutoff. For some reason, we wanted to start passing something at 6:45, we could.
Yeah, I think when we, so we do have some sample agendas to look at because it's part of our policy manual resolution. But just to preview that issue, one thing that we'll need to talk about when we, is we have members of the public coming to. So some people, if they think it's like just casual discussion before calendaring or the things that happen now, they might think to show up at seven. And you're correct, Commissioner Monahan, they could take up at, we could start their item at 6:30. And so that might create more confusion for the public. Um, so that's something, and things like proclamations, what time do they show up? So these are things that when we get to that, we kind of need to think about where is the best place to put that, those commissioner discussion things? And we can see some examples, but that's something I'd like just to think about also.
Um, with regard to the vacancy, um, I, I appreciate the need to have the commission make the appointment. I could support, you know, you can't depend on that next person, the, the fourth person that was elected. People move, um, out there's, and that, does that mean you go to the fifth one? I think you've encountered things like that in the past. And so I think there has to be a process developed. I'd like, rather than just leaving it wide open, I think there does need to be a process developed. A, a, a basic, nothing elaborate, but just, uh, because we would be substituting the public's judgment for our judgment on a new member. And I think that it's important that we do that well.
As background, the state statute currently says that the governing body selects the, um, person to fill the vacancy with no guidance on how the governing body does that. And then the statute says if you fail to do it within 60 days, you must have a special election regardless of when other elections or the, all those things we've talked about. So the statute itself doesn't create a process for the governing body and.
We could.
And we can, and that's something to think about, just as a remind.
That's what I'm talking about, is that we give it a little bit of form or substance. It doesn't have, you know, it doesn't have to be detailed.
I guess the thing is, we can't bind another commission and they can simply change it with three votes. So that's why, it's like, why are we going to set up a process that the other group can just.
That's what this is though, is structure.
And it could be as simple as asking the public, we got two weeks, anybody that wants to be considered, send in their resume to the city commission. We'll sit around at a, at a briefing session and talk about the pros and cons and try to come up with something. And we could probably throw our own people's names in the hat too or so. But I, yeah, I don't know if we, yeah, you have, I think it's going to depend a lot on the situation. Um, yeah, if, uh, yeah, if it's just like a couple of months or so, we could probably agree, okay, let's call Tom Phillips up, get him over here, fill in these last two months. And, and then we can go to the next election comes along. Um, so you're saying, well, we can figure it out when the time comes. Keep it simple in the, in this part.
That is my recommendation. That's what the state law says. And as we've said, the, how the commission wants to address it is going to depend upon how much time's left in the term, the circumstances for the vacancy and all kinds of things. And so it's allowing that flexibility for the governing body at the time is, um, is, is the recommendation. This ordinance is just the overarching theme. You have the overarching, excuse me, overarching rule, you have the opportunity to do that. If we put something in here, we can do that. It may not be the best fit for every circumstance versus the governing body saying, hey, this person has three years left in the term. We want to do the kind of process Commissioner Haddasall, um, discussed where we take applications for a month. Um, that, the commission will have the freedom to do that if they, if you choose at the time of the vacancy. Any other comments or questions before we kind of move on to the second half of this ordinance? Okay. So this set, this is the same ordinance. This is Article Three, the city manager section. A lot of this is the same as what you have in your current ordinances. There are some changes that have been noted. Um, there are a few substantive changes I wanted to talk about. Um, I appreciate Commissioner Butler's comment about the residency, and I'd like to address that since he brought it up. The state law has, this, this is in two dash 32 qualifications. This is the same as KSA 12 dash 10 12, which has been repealed. So the law and our current city ordinance, actually, sorry, the previous state law that's been repealed and our current ordinance reads exactly like this, which is that the choice is on the basis of administrative ability and not limited by residence. The city commission can change that. So if you would like to impose a residency requirement, that's something this commission can do. But just as background for you, the reason it wasn't there before was because the state law had that same language. And we've had a city code provision that was consistent with it. We could have chartered out of that state law though, years ago. We just have, this is how we've written it. So if there is feedback on that, but I just wanted to give that background on the residency.
Yeah, can I ask Ron one question? Is there any requirements for city employees to live in the city?
Uh, there is not. Uh, I tend to have, I, I encourage department heads to live in the city, but I have made exceptions to that provision.
Would you, would you object? I mean, as the city, current city manager, isn't it important that you live in the city that you're the city manager for?
I would recommend that.
I do too.
The, uh, the other aspect though, is that there are unique circumstances. And you may be in a situation where you're recruiting and you have, uh, you may want to hire somebody that's going to commute for a while. A lot of times you see residency within a year or something like that, depending on their situation and where they're at. But those are, those are a lot of different issues. Uh, and, and, you know, we, we used to be more strict on residency for employees, especially first responders. Now we've kind of created a response time to live within, uh, for certain positions. So those are, those are on a case by case basis.
I mean, I support the residency for the city manager. I mean, you can have a provision that, you know, during the transition, it can take so much time or whatever. But if that time expires, it expires.
Well, it should be part of the employment agreement. I think when, um, we were doing, uh, RCPD director, we wanted them to, um, Dennis Butler had to move here to stay in the city. And I don't know how it is for other agencies like the Flint Hills Regional Council or even the current director that you're looking for or anybody like that. But I think, um, the city manager position is very different than other department heads' position. So I would hope, because the city manager is very involved in our community and with the relationships with the university and the chamber and all of that, I think becoming very familiar, it would be important when you're making decisions, especially budgetary decisions for the city, that you also reside in the city. Uh, so I, I think we should look at that just a little bit closer. Um, I mean, if they move here within a year or so, that's fine too. If they're seeking a point from, um, another state and wanting to move here, that makes a difference. But eventually having a residence here would be important.
Mayor, Commissioners, Rob, Director of Public Works, just real quick, even our labor employees that are on call, we have a mileage distance so that they respond a certain amount of time. Not saying it's good or bad, just a fact.
Well, they're summoned to emergency situations and you need to assure at shorter, at a time to respond. I think that's a good policy.
Yeah, it's not just MFD, it's, it's also water, rain breaks, sewer breaks, uh, traffic signal texts, um, so on and so forth.
Thank you, Rob, appreciate that. Residents, uh, uh, be a resident or achieve it within one year of hire.
Yeah, no, I agree with that. And I think department heads are different than the city manager. I mean, it's still, I think what you're doing.
City manager, yeah, okay.
That's fine. I think I go, go along with that. Should be a resident, you know, and give them transition time, a year, good enough.
Thank you, Commissioners. The, the remaining, the two key substantive changes to this article, like I said, a lot, you have a draft that shows the existing provisions. A lot of it's the same. But I do want to note two changes. The first is two 34B, sorry, two dash 34B. This is a provision in here that, um, basically says in writing that the city manager or the designee can refuse entry or ask someone to leave public property. The reason this has been added, this is the inherent authority of the city manager. This is, um, something though, that when we have had a situation where, um, we've had individuals in city property and the police respond to that, to remove the individual, they always ask us, can you show us who has the authority in the building? Um, and we write down the person who has the authority to say this person can't be in the building. So it's primarily for trespass. This is something other cities have in writing so that in those situations, we can say, yes, the manager or the designee had the authority to say that this person needs to be removed from the building. Um, and that's, it's really just something we've been asked, um, about in the past. Um, and the second part of that sentence is we have a couple policy manual resolutions that we've talked about updating historically about real estate. But we talked about adding this just to make it clear that the manager can allow a lease or license or of, um, temporary use of public property under our control. We do this already if there's a lease. Some of the leases we bring to you, some of them our city manager can sign. This is something, we don't have to put this in here, but it's, it's really just trying to bring some certainty to something that we've been doing. And this is only applying to leases. It's not applying to the sale easements or any of those things, any kind of, um, conveyance. So that's new. And then the last thing to note, um, there was, there were sections two dash 57 through two dash 62. These were bond requirements for the commissioners and for various employees. And those have all been repealed with the exception of the city treasurer. And so this new section, two dash 57, is the exact language from the state law adopted for our ordinance, um, for the bond for our city treasurer. Um, but other than that, I've, I've removed all the other bond requirements because we weren't following it strictly. But also we now cover our employees and their performance through our insurance plans, which is what most cities do. They cover that, um, that way. So we can put those back in. Um, they would be based upon our prior, um, uh, code and not state laws, and state law does not require them anymore. So those are the main changes for, to finish off the second ordinance. Um, and I have taken any other comments or feedback you have on that.
What bonds are those? Were those the certainty bonds that we used to?
They were, yeah, they were $5,000 bonds, um, about the performance and it.
Didn't they in Johnson County just go up to a bunch of school bowl people and put summons or something against their bonds?
I don't know, I haven't.
Which you just said that the state law doesn't require them anymore.
Not in our form of government, it's not required anymore. Some, some form of government still have bonds, um, and maybe a school district does, may. This is specific to our form of government. Those bond requirements were repealed.
Okay. Are we, uh, in agreement to support those last recommendations Katie made about, um, city manager qualifications, the notice for trespass, uh, that the city manager has granted the authority? And, um, the exact, the bond required, section two dash 57?
Yes.
I am, yes.
Okay, thank you, Commissioners. So these, as I mentioned, the ordinances were our highest priority in the sense that they're on a timeline with the charter ordinances. And these will be on your May 17th meeting. Since you've seen the full drafts, they're currently scheduled to be on the consent agenda. Um, and then with the second reading at the, the first meeting in June. Um, so getting into kind of the, what I would call the meatier aspects of, of tonight's presentation. I warmed you up with the easy discussion items, so now we're going to get into the more difficult ones. Um, we, in 2018, we adopted the policy manual resolution that applies to the governing body. This is the thing that we kind of talk about as like our public comment policy, but it was really a little broader than that. You have this in your packet, you've seen this. Um, I didn't provide you a draft tonight intentionally because a lot of it was going to depend upon what you said for the ordinance. So I'll make the changes to it based on the new meeting times, the agendas. We've talked in the past about putting some of the motions procedure in there. We've talked about addressing remote attendance, that would be added to the draft. Um, and then we've talked about modifying public comment. What I just, just to put this into our timeline, this is something, so assuming our ordinances go into effect June 30th, our goal would be for this policy manual resolution to be in effect right about then too. But because it doesn't have to be published in the paper and it doesn't have to have two readings, we don't have to do it on May 17th to keep it on that schedule. We have some more time to go through the meat of it. Um, these are some of the things that we've talked about in the past. I want to show you, I have, this is in your slides. Um, I pulled a couple cities' agendas. Um, and I didn't, I mean, I just pulled the big items to give you an idea of how cities without briefing sessions schedule the discussion that you're talking about. Um, in Lawrence, they, this is their order. Obviously, they're miscellaneous is the, was what you're all talking about. That's when they, um, discuss issues not in the published agenda. Right before that, they do calendaring. So that's, they have separated that part of their briefing into two functions. So they would do the calendaring, that would conclude, and then they have their discussion. In their city, they're doing it after the other items because they might have people showing up for proclamations or general agenda items who want to kind of have a better idea of when their item will be. Um, but they're doing it before public comment too. So that also gives it sort of a, a bookend on the backside. So it doesn't go on too long because you have public who are waiting to speak. And those are on issues, Lauren, and for Lawrence, those are their issues that are not on the agenda. It is somewhat common that general public comment, which we have at the start of the meeting, it's somewhat common, it's at the end of other cities' meetings. And that's just the general comment. And then just to show you one other example, Olathe, um, who also doesn't have a briefing. I, actually, I should say, I don't know of another city in Kansas that does a briefing session. I have, I did not find one. Um, so there could be one, but really if you look at any of the first-class cities, they don't have briefings. So you could look at their agendas for inspiration. Um, in their case, Olathe is similar. They have wedged their general issues, like their open comment in the middle. They've capped it at 30 minutes max. And then they start like what I would call their briefing topics after that. And they're doing their planning session and that's their calendar session discussion. And their discussion items are the same things, like the items the commission might want to put on a future agenda, those kinds of things. So you can kind of see where they fall, where they have, um, put it in their order. Um, one thing that we talked about internally under our current agenda was we could do that discussion. You know, you could do it between, you know, after consent agenda, between consent in general if you wanted. I mean, you, there's different, you could put it in different places. The things the commission needs to think about is who else is in the room and why do they need to be there? So who from the public is going to attend and what time do we want them to show up? Um, so that they know kind of the order, um, that their item might be taken up. And then the other thing to keep in mind is to confine it in some way. I mean, obviously, if it's the very, there's a danger if it's in the very end that, that that will encourage it to go endlessly. And so sometimes having it in the middle of the meeting is an advantage. That's what, that's why Lawrence puts it there, is so that they have, that kind of confines that, um, discussion with a natural barrier of public comment following it. We don't have to decide this today, but we do, if you have some feedback on this, because what we will do is I'll come back with a draft of changes to this 2018 resolution that shows the changes from your ordinances and then also, um, reorganizes this. Um, so if I'll, I'll go back to this, these are kinds of the big topics we've talked about changing before. If you have any feedback looking at the, kind of on our topics tonight or looking at the policy, I can take that tonight. And then I'll return with the draft that you'll have an opportunity to respond to.
So Katie, I think, um, I like, uh, a little bit of this better. I think, um, the sample from Lawrence. Uh, I think, you know, having proclamations, presentations around six, consent agenda. I think the public comment should go right after proclamations and, uh, presentations like we do currently because the public is here at that time and we don't know what other family circumstances they may be having at home, that they should have their chance first to speak. Anything that's not on the consent agenda or reg, regular items like we do right now. And I, last time we had a meeting back in, I don't know, 18, 2018 or 17 about a public comment. I am, uh, not comfortable with limiting, limiting to 30 minutes. We've never had it for 30 minutes. People don't usually go for that long. But I don't want to have a time limit depending on the issue if public is here to speak to it. I mean, this is, um, the people's government and I'd rather have them have that opportunity. It has never gone that far.
Are you talking, you're talking about the general first, first meeting of the month, public comment?
Right.
You're, are you talking about individual item?
No, not items. I'm talking about the public comment.
The, the pre stuff?
Right.
Is that, has it ever gotten 30 minutes?
It has never gotten that long. I mean, once in a while it might, but I just wanted to leave it at that. But that should not be, uh, having, because we haven't had that problem. But if there is an issue that people want to speak to.
It's been a couple of years.
Yeah, that it should be left alone. But I think proclamations, public comment, consent agenda, regular agenda, calendar and miscellaneous. I think the briefing session about calendar and miscellaneous should come after the general agenda. Uh, because usually if the, the community is, you know, they may just go on with watching the rest of the meeting. Uh, but I think, uh, having our discussion of calendar miscellaneous should follow after our regular agenda items. That would be, uh, my suggestion for this proposal.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that. I think that's probably. Yeah, I'm fine with that. I think that's probably good and order-resenting. So we actually agree on something.
Thank you. I, I really do, I, I support. I support the public comment coming after proclamations. I think a member of the public should be able to come and speak at the opening public comment and then leave, and not have to sit here. I can't imagine a member of the public waiting until nine, after nine, nine-thirty, let's say, just to make a comment to us like Mr. Olds did. I think that that, we do it right up front. And I like the, I don't know whether you call it regular agenda or general agenda, the calendar. I just don't like the term miscellaneous. I don't, it needs a name besides miscellaneous. And, and I understand it's discuss issues, not on the published agenda, but that's, I, pretty basic.
Yeah, actually, I agree. I don't like those public comments at the end. I don't want someone to have to wait. So if we want to put it more towards the middle, that's fine.
What did I not speak to?
I, I think Commissioners, you might have, we might have talked about it. Here's the list of things for this policy manual resolution. If there's any other feedback, I can take it now. It's just enough to get a draft together for you.
Allow for remote attendance.
Yes.
Yes.
I think we would all agree to that.
If I may follow up on that, Commissioner, and ask you a question. One thing that cities who are implementing permanent remote attendance are, are putting limits on that remote attendance if it's only for convenience. So if a person has a medical reason or another reason, there's no limit on how often they attend remotely. That's not the situation. But there have been a couple cities that somebody just decided it was more convenient to attend remotely, and they just stopped attending in person. And so those cities have responded by saying, if you can't attend, you should attend. It's your responsibility to show up. And so I'm gonna, I will put in the draft, unless you all tell me not to, that the remote attendance, that there is a limitation if it's just for personal convenience versus, you know, a necessity. And there's some guidance out there on that that I can...
Travel is not a personal convenience.
That's correct.
If you're out of town. Okay.
We, there's also a situation where a governing body member has moved. They say they haven't moved, but they're coming from elsewhere every meeting. And so that's become an issue for that city. And so that's why it's important to maybe put an outside parameter on it.
Yeah, I agree. Because the idea here is like if you had a scheduled vacation, you're going to be gone for a couple of meetings, fine.
Right.
You know, if you're sick, fine. But yeah, it shouldn't be a case where you just decide I'd, I'd rather just do the meeting from at home.
With a meeting every Tuesday night, it's really kind of, you feel like one foot's nailed to, to being here. And it's, it's difficult to pick a meeting not to attend. So it's, it's usually those life events when we have to be gone or scheduled vacations. So I want to be sure that we're...
Yeah, I think we need to make sure it can't, can't be abused. But I think we can get more people to think about being on the commission if they know they have that latitude, if they, like I know when I was on, it was very difficult to do a business schedule with, you know, you got to be there every week and arrange flights and everything. Else, I think we'll get more people willing to do it.
I agree. I think it's better to leave it flexible. I, I don't want to have parameters. I mean, they should have a residence here and still be participating on several of our things. I know, for example, one of the Board of Ed members, they've been on a, out of pocket for a year, and she was able to participate. But, and also, if we say remote, I want to make sure we're also including, whether it's by phone or by Zoom. Because sometimes when you're in a, in a certain place, you may not have the Wi-Fi for a Zoom meeting. You may just be able to use your phone, you know, depending on bandwidth and things like that. So I want to be clear, when we say remote, we mean all modes of participation remotely.
So what, what are your questions on ad motion procedure?
Yeah, that was my question.
Well, we've talked about that before with the Code of Procedure. So the league has a small, very small manual called the Kansas Code of Procedure for Governing Bodies. I are, I have a draft of it. It's, it's not too lengthy, but basically, it's talking about the basics, like a motion has to be seconded, that how the discussion occurs, those things. It's very basic. Pardon?
There's no changes needed.
Right. It's, we don't have it adopted. Let's put it that way. So right now, our motions procedure is just our practice. And so sometimes that, that can be, you know, get us tripped up some. So this just puts it in writing so we can point to the procedure. It's consistent with what the league has recommended. And that would be, go in this policy, which we currently aren't addressing anywhere. So. I think that's, unless there's any other feedback, I think that's the information that I would need to put together the draft. I, this is a little bit out of order, but just, for some reason, the last slide's got messed up. So I'm going to come back to that one. Discussion item number four, this is, okay, so this is an old nineteen ninety-seven policy manual resolution that pertains to advisory boards. This is only city advisory boards and committees. It does not apply to the Law Board or the boards that we appoint to that are not advisory to the governing body. This is something that was adopted in ninety-seven. You, you have it in your packet. It even includes a adopted application or interest form that has to be filled out for, that we're not, we're not using. So I think if I, this, this was adopted, and then it was kind of lost for a while. And so we have relocated it and looked at it and said, well, this is mostly what we're doing now, but not strictly. We're not, our application form has obviously changed, and there's some changes we need to make. So this commission has been discussing board appointments, and we've talked about this as part of it. This policy manual is still valid, and so it has not been repealed. So even though it hasn't something we've been, that's been front of mind, it's something that we, if we want to change our board appointment process, we need to clean up this nineteen ninety-seven policy manual resolution by repealing it and replacing it with a new one. I put a couple discussion points in here for you, but I've had some different questions about appointments. And so I wanted to share some, kind of some basic parameters of appointments, so, and just some background. So right now, most of our appointments, not all of them, but most of them, in our form of government, say that the mayor makes the appointment, and it's confirmed by the governing body. We don't have a lot of definition in our ordinances about when an appointment is rejected or confirmed. There's a general rule from a Supreme Court case from more than a hundred years ago that's still law, valid law, and is actually in the governing body handbook, that, that the, everyone has to act in good faith. And that's, that duty goes two ways. And one is that the mayor has to fulfill the official duty of bringing appointments to the governing body. And the second part is that the governing body has to consider them in good faith. That decision makes clear that the governing body does not have to articulate any reason to reject an appointment, but that they should be acting under a duty of good faith. There's a statute that applies only to, and this is a statute that, it's twelve dash sixteen, one twenty-eight. It applies only to appointments, and our appointments, that are mayoral confirmed by the governing body. So it does not apply to the Law Board. The Law Board statute says, and I'm using that as an example because we've talked about it before. The Law Board statute says that the Law Board appointments are selected by the governing body. So I'm exempting the governing body from this, this part of the discussion. Any of the boards that we have decided are mayoral appointments with confirmation by the governing body are subject to this statute. And the statute says that the commission has, the governing body, it doesn't say commission. The governing body has to approve it within forty-five days, or it's deemed approved. And that if the governing body for this group of appointments does not want to appoint the mayoral appointment, then they have to adopt a resolution stating that the appointee is unfit or unqualified. This is, this is not a uniform state law. It's something the city can charter out of. When it was adopted in two thousand and eight, a lot of cities did charter out of it. We did not. So it would apply to that, to any category of advisory board that we have, that we've set up the appointment that way. Like I said, it does not apply to the Law Board or any of the other, anything that just says governing body appointment. That's not, that statute doesn't apply to it. That's something that we need to talk about and keep in mind. If, when we update the policy manual resolution for advisory boards, we need to talk about the whole process. What applications have to be submitted? We need, we should update that. How they're reviewed? Who makes the selection for whatever the governing body selects? If that's the mayor, if that's someone else? And then that process. The other thing that we need to talk about that's been inconsistent is, and that does come up from a very practical perspective, is attendance. So this, this, we have issues where somebody isn't attending regularly, or they're appointed and they don't show up at all, or they can't, they don't respond to contacts. And we have in this nineteen ninety-seven resolution that talks about attendance, that someone can be removed. But in, in application, that's been a struggle for our liaisons and our boards. So attendance is, is kind of a sub-issue, but it's something that is very real in the sense that we deal with attendance issues across the boards. And that means someone has been appointed, but they're not showing up. Or the board, in some cases, the board no longer has a quorum to meet, and it's, the people are officially appointed. So attendance is something that from a liaison perspective, they would like to get some, a better concrete process on. Right now, the process for them, for most of them is, the board has to take action to make a recommendation to you as a governing body to remove somebody. Some cities have a more automatic process where if you meet this threshold, then like, for example, the mayor can remove the person. It doesn't have to come to the governing body, only in the, only in the situation of attendance. We don't have to do that. But that is something that the liaisons have asked us to clean up. So there's quite a few issues here to talk about with the process from application to review to consideration. And then on the backside, after the appointment, attendance is something that we'd like to get some process guidance on. One thing I put on here that I also want to bring up is what's called a holdover term. So that's continuation of an expired term if there's no appointment made. So we appoint to a specific term. So when we make our motion, it usually says you're from this date to that date. However, the general rule in the law is that you can, if the person remains eligible to hold the position, they can hold over in an appointed position until the position is filled. And I think our liaisons would share some practical stories about that as well. In some cases, that holdover has saved the board because they couldn't find somebody, and that holdover was willing to serve until it was filled, and they were able to continue to meet and do their business. In some cases, that's a problem for the board. So, but the general rule, if we don't address it in our policy, is that those holdovers can occur. So that's something else that I know has been a question that we would, we need some feedback on. This policy, just to put it in the framework of everything else we're doing tonight, this is a policy manual resolution. We don't have to, this, this policy manual resolution is not this particular one. The advisory board is not tied to any of the ordinances that we just talked about. We can have those ordinances, and this resolution can be on a different schedule because those ordinances don't reference this, this one. Our ordinances are tied to the policy manual resolution we just talked about. They're not tied to this one. So this one's standalone. So if you want to take more time with this, we're not on the same crunch. This is the advisory board one from ninety-seven.
So that one's in effect or not?
It is in effect. It's never been repealed. It just was kind of lost for a period of time. As sometimes happens, and when things were adopted a long time ago. So it is in effect. It has not been repealed. So when, if we want to change it, then we do need to repeal this and replace it with something else. The other thing I want to bring up about Law Board, because it's a question that's come up. So we did have a Law Board policy in two thousand and six about the process to appoint to Law Board. Again, that's not covered by this ninety-seven thing. That was repealed. That Law Board specific process was repealed in two thousand and fourteen. When it was repealed, there was discussion by the governing body at the time, who at least two of you were on, maybe three of you, about doing some kind of slate or some other process for Law Board appointments. And I wasn't a part of that item, so I don't know what happened, except that the next month after that was repealed, it was just the norm, the normal appointment process was followed, where the mayor took an application, made a nomination, and it went to the governing body for the Law Board. So that, that nor, and that's the process that's been followed since then. Just to clarify for everyone, that Law Board practice I just talked about is not in a policy. It's not in the statute. If you want to do something different with the Law Board, I would recommend strongly that you do a policy for them. It doesn't have to be like the one you repealed, but put your process in writing. Because what's harder for people, and for all of us, is when the process isn't in writing, and we're wrestling with the process. And the key, a key principle for us to follow is that the same, at least for that same, that board, the applicants have to follow the same process. We can have different processes for different boards, but if you're applying for board number one, everyone has to go through the same board number one process. That's, that's the key. So that's the consistency we want to ensure for people. And, and just as an aside, that would only apply to the non-commissioner appointments to the Law Board. Because our position is sometime, one, you know, one of them includes a seated commissioner. That process doesn't apply to it. Yes.
Yeah, in two thousand and fourteen, the argument was over the citizen appointments. Because prior to that time, the commission was putting all commissioners on there. And then that's why, once we resolved that, you know, it just didn't come up again.
Correct. Commissioner, that did, that did inspire that in two thousand and fourteen. But that two thousand and six policy that was repealed, it contained another provision in it. And that provision stated that the mayor took application. It, it basically formalized the process. It also had the part that you're talking about, which was the reason that it was repealed. But it did say the mayor brings the appointment to the governing body from an application, those things. Once we repealed that two thousand and six, that went away also, which wasn't the subject of the commission's interests at the time. Yes, that's true.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay. Want to kind of go through what you kind of gave to us about that state law that talked about the forty-five days, which was originally the league had in there only applied to the mayor, city government, when the mayor was elected separately.
Correct.
Correct. And they didn't have it, that it applied to our form, and hence, they're going to change that. I can kind of understand why they interpreted it that way, since the mayor in our form is ceremonial and is equivalent to another commissioner, unless we give the mayor that power to do, which obviously, whatever power we giveth, we can take away. So I can see why they interpreted it. So it seems like we get trapped in that law because we're calling the person the mayor. Like if we called it the board coordinator, we wouldn't have that problem.
I think that your analysis is correct in the sense that it's not that they're called the mayor. It's that we've appointed one person to bring the appointment to the governing body. That's, so that's, so...
So even if we called it the board coordinator, it would...
I, I don't think that that would save us from the statute. The question, unless, unless it's a staff person. So there are, there's a couple cities that have a staff person, like, and it's the city manager typically, who may not like that suggestion. It's typically the city manager who is in that role. And if it's a staff person, then, then correct. That would not apply. It's, it's if you appoint one member of your governing body to that. So we, we could take, step outside of it a couple ways. We step outside of it by not having... So all the ordinances that say mayoral appointment, that aren't statutory boards, those we can change. They can be changed. If they don't say mayoral appointment confirmed by the governing body, that statute doesn't apply.
Right.
Or you can assign that duty to a staff member to bring it to the governing body. But I'm not sure that's really what this commission desires either, frankly. So...
Okay. And I guess, and now we're getting into this, what do you determine is an actual appointment? Because this, you know, policy manual thing we have in effect says the mayor will make a recommendation and calls it a nomination and approval of a recommendation. It doesn't say in here the mayor will make an appointment.
Yes, you're correct. But the ordinances that we have in place that predate this, for the most part, do say appointment.
Well, I know, but...
So we could change that.
But when you explained to me before, you said, a policy manual resolution, we can pass one of these versus changing all those ordinances. So that's where I'm getting confused, which supersedes the other.
Yes, I see your que, so, so let's ignore the statute for a second.
Right, yeah.
If we want to interpret appointed by the mayor, which is in our ordinances, in a policy manual resolution, that where we say appointed by the mayor, when it's in our ordinances, means a recommendation that the governing body can vote up or down. We can do that. The reason that the statute complicates it is because it says the same language as our ordinances, which is... It, it, so you can do exactly what I said, but you're still going to be subject to that statute because the statute says, if the ordinance says a mayoral appointment confirmed by the governing body.
Okay. So you're, so you're saying now, because of that, we can't do what you said before?
Well, you could, but you're just subject to the statute.
I don't want to be subject to that statute.
In, okay. Because what you, you had asked me before, as I understood it, was, can we interpret appointed by the mayor in a way to create a process around that that allows governing body review of the applicants? And my answer to that is still yes. But if the governing body rejects, they're still subject to the statute for the ordinances that say mayoral appointment.
Okay. So you're saying now, if we want to change it, we can't do it. To change it so that we're not subject to that state law, which I would contend wasn't meant for us originally. We would have to go back to the original ordinance.
Or charter out of it. Out of the state law. You can do either one. Correct.
Right, but the charter takes four votes too.
Correct.
To do that. So your original thing, which being able to get it in quickly, you're saying, at least your interpretation, is we can't get out of it quickly by what, like a policy resolution?
Well
So to not be subject to that, that law.
Well, again, that only applies in the, in a rejection situation. So you can still modify the process up to the point of rejection because what, if you wanted, what, what I understood the question to be was if, if you want to change the process so the governing body has more oversight of the mayoral appointment, right, and an opportunity to review them before they take the vote, that we can do in a policy manual resolution now. That's something we can do. It's just that now on the backend, if the governing body says we reject your appointment in certain circumstances, they're going to have to adopt the resolution unless we do something to get out of the resolution, or the state law. So we can still implement that
How would you craft it such that if the mayor recommended someone and the commission did not agree that they'd be able to change that and not have it, have that state law merely wait forty-five days and automatically happen?
Well, that statutes, I guess we're talking about two different points in the process. I'm saying the governing body could create a process, but at the point of rejection, that statute applies, but you could still have some oversight and feedback to the mayor before that appointment is made as part of the policy manual resolution. So you could have a process where
Right, but my end goal is to make it so the commission, if they do not want to accept the mayor's recommendation, they can go ahead and pick the candidate of their choosing.
Oh, in that case, then you have to either charter out of that state law
Or change the original ordinance.
Yes.
Change the original
One of those two paths for the, those boards.
Okay, so, so we need to change the original ordinance. So now in this situation with the ones that we have, we're captured by that state law unless we just do the resolution to say that, based on that state thing, to say the unqualified or unfit. And as you said, we don't have to give an explanation for that. We just need to make that resolution. So if we wanted to carry through with what we wanted to do at the last meeting, we would have to do that resolution at our next meeting because forty-five days will expire on June third and we don't have another meeting
Correct.
Until that time.
Yeah, so the, and you bring up a point, Commissioner, that the league who gave us the advice that it didn't apply to us, who are now changing that, that they told us, you bring up the point and I, that's one reason I called and talked to him about that advice too, because in a commission form of government, as you noted, the mayor only has any authority, the commission gives the mayor. But in our case, we've given our mayor the ability to appoint in all kinds of situations and that's how we opted under that statute. But we don't have to do that. And I just, as a side note, again, just to reiterate, not all of our boards say that. Not all of our boards say mayoral appointment confirmed by the governing body. Most of them do, but not all of them. And so any of the ones that don't say that aren't subject to that statute. So we'd have to rethink the whole of it. Like if you want the mayor not to appoint in the traditional way, we need some feedback on, well, how does that process look? How does that play out for the governing body to have that responsibility?
Yeah, which makes it a little more complicated because of that law. We can't do it simply say, we'll go ahead and then if we don't like it, we'll do something else. We can't do it that way.
You can if you don't have the mayor make that initial appointment because then you're not under the state law. Yeah, and I think we're saying the same thing. I mean, I think you get where
We have to make, we have to do that switch.
Right, you'd have to switch your framework, your approach to mayoral appointments that has been in place for a long time. It would have to be switched. That whole framework and we'd have, yeah.
Where before, because we've got this new interpretation, it was ceremonial or thought to be ceremonial. And so we did it with that understanding, but this change in the interpretation of the law, or at least them bringing it out says, well, we set all this stuff up that we thought was ceremonial, but we got trapped by this thing.
Yeah, I wouldn't describe it that same way. It's just talking about the fact that commission, basically that, that a commission can opt into the statute that doesn't have our terminology if they, they adopt an ordinance to opt in, which is essentially what we did. We don't, we, we didn't have to be subject to it.
No, we didn't.
Right.
I could see us developing a new process, but I object to a resolution saying that someone that has been nominated is unfit or unqualified. I think that is an insult to honorable people who have stepped forth and applied on our system because they want to serve on a board. The other thing is right now, I think that it's, it to our, I, I, if we're going to do this, we need to, to do it. And not drag it out because we have some boards that are going to start having quorum issues if we don't get some appointments made to them. So as mayor, I need to know, do I go ahead and make the three appointments to the code appeals board? Or do I sit this out until July and let the, that clause there about continuation until another appointment is made? There just needs to be some clarification.
I, I think what, what the mayor just said is you have your fourth vote to charter out of that state statute. In the sense of you want to spare, if, if the commission doesn't, it's, it's not going to happen very often and when I, and I think we don't need to make wholesale changes to this thing. There's just every so rarely an eyesight incident where I think the, the commission, the three, three votes on the commission might not approve of a appointment or two. But I, I think, I think if you, if you want to spare the potential embarrassment of saying you're unfit, then we should, the easy way is charter out of that thing and then we can just at, at a meeting say, no, three of us don't like that. But ideally, if we can have some discussion a week, meeting or two before at this discussion hour, whatever we call it after we accept it, yeah, put in the six o'clock start thing. We can have some of that discussion and if somebody feels, feels really strongly about some, somebody on the board coming up for reappointment, we can talk about it then, but I, I think the solution, which is what we kind of wanted over the last couple of months to spare any potential embarrassment, is, it's, let's get this, let's get ourselves chartered out of that state statute that requires us to say somebody's unfit in order to not appoint them instead of just saying, we don't want them appointed for no reason. And we can maybe even avoid it by getting them back off the appointment list before it's published. So that may not be what you intended, but that may be the simple solution.
I think if we're going to change the process, then we aren't making mayoral appointments. We're making, a, a majority of three will be who makes the appointments and this will happen again under the current thinking. There'll be more people rejected. And so we're going to start a new pattern until July or it depends on when we get the, the thinking together to actually change the process. Because right now we have a process that's formal. And that's how it needs to work until we change it and adopt another, another process.
I, I'm, I'm not sure. I, I, I'm a little confused. I think the process we've had has actually worked. I think because we are only mayor for one year. We're not mayor for four years. It's after you and Mark, Mark, then me, then Wen. So there isn't this one side, for lack of a better word, taking over our boards. I think it's, it's very balanced and oftentimes we've respected that. I think once in a while, we may offer somebody else's name or question, but it hasn't been practiced. It hasn't been the way we normally do business. I think I've said at least ninety-nine percent of the votes, yes, to mayors, to Wen Wen was mayor, to all of his appointments. And I think traditionally that's how we followed it because we also want our boards to be balanced. And typically they all get along and they do the business of that board. So I, if there is an objection, I think it's okay for there, there to be a resolution where they do say if they're unqualified or unfit. Instead of just saying, I don't like them or they've been there too short. If that's the case, then they need to state that. And it should be done ahead of time. So if that person that has been selected by the mayor to be appointed, they should have a space for them to come and advocate for themselves instead of being caught off guard. They should have some knowledge of, oh, they're not going to appoint me. I should show up. They think this, this and this. I think that gives voice to, to that person. We may still not appoint them, or we may appoint them. I don't know. But that gives that space to our community members, which are volunteering their, their time to serve on these boards as good citizens with good intent. And, and I think we need to hear them out instead of surprising them. Us being surprised, maybe that's what we signed up for, but the community didn't sign up for that. And I think that's, it's extremely important to give them a heads up. And I think putting it in a note and it's in our packet that they know, you should probably show up and speak to this. So I, I don't think the way it is right now, the, the one that the league is suggesting or might be changing, I don't think it's a bad policy. I think it's good because I think it keeps everybody in check and there won't be any surprises to anybody.
Statue.
Right, and the public would be involved in that discussion about, oh, why? Why am I not going to be on it? And we need to be able to give them an adequate reason. If somebody has an adequate reason.
Well, one, I'd say we tried to get this for a couple of months to have a discussion beforehand and we couldn't get that going to do it. And I think we need a way that if the majority of the commission has an objection to someone, they should be able to bring it up. The other thing is to keep it the way it is, you're really saying, to me, there's another tradition of how we pick the, the mayor, which is totally tradition and isn't anything there. And it'd be like, why should three commissioners vote for someone for mayor if that's not who they want for mayor, especially if we're going to keep appointments the way they are? So this, I think, allows us to keep the tradition and have that ceremonial post. But, but you know, let's take away the non-ceremonial part of it because it's even in there. That is what our mayor is supposed to be is ceremonial. And all of us thought before this revelation with even the league having to change their manual as part of the revelation, that, that the, the three commissioners still was the final dictate. So that's why I say we need to change it because of the new, the new revelations that are there.
So you don't really want to work on a new process?
No, I definitely want to work on a new process. I just heard we didn't want to work on a new process, so that's I'd agree with Mark. Let's charter out of that and then we could basically keep what we have.
The state law is if they're rejected.
Right, so if we charter out of that, we could stay with what we have now.
Appoint people. We have to have a legitimate process to make appointments. This is the process now, is my point.
And let's keep the process, but let's charter out of that thing, which is, makes it a, a, a public humiliation thing if somebody, if we don't want to support somebody.
Yeah, that's what we're saying.
We can agree on that part. And I, and the thing is, as they figured out down in Washington DC, when somebody's in power, you can't be making crazy, lots of crazy changes because you're not always going to be the ones in power and they're going to come back and bite you in the so we don't want to get, I don't think we need to make wholesale humongous changes, but we just, let's, let's make this so the process is, is, is less burdensome and, and potentially mean in a certain way. Let's just make it all more, more make it more. Let's make it more.
See, I don't understand why we can't just have a simple process that says our ceremonial mayor makes the recommendations based on the applications. They come to the governing body who, who either affirms it up or down. And if they decide it's down on a vote, then the governing body can, from the list, recommend another person and vote on it that night. It's done. It's a three-step process. And I think as Commissioner Reddy said, it's probably a rarity. You know, I can think maybe four or five times in ten years where, where, you know, we've had an issue. And sometimes that gets contentious, but it doesn't happen that much. And, and, and I agree, you know, we don't, we don't want to slow up your appointments, but I don't see why we can't fast track this. And then my other point is, you know, that state statute, I know your, your legal opinion, you're a lawyer, I'm not, but I don't think the thing applies simply because we're a ceremonial mayor. And it was not written for a ceremonial mayor.
We're a
And I would challenge that.
We're a commission manager form of government and that's what the statute references, just like a
No, it doesn't.
No, it doesn't.
No, it doesn't. It references
That's the problem. It doesn't reference.
It doesn't. And so I know, you know, you've got your legal opinion on it. I don't know, I could probably find five or six other legal minds that might judge it differently. But I, I don't want to get into an argument over that. What I want to do is the three things I've outlined, and I think John probably agrees and so does Mark, figure out how to do it and let's get it done quickly.
Yeah.
And then the mayor can continue making recommendations and ninety-five percent of those, ninety-eight percent of those will probably get approved. And if we have one or two that are contentious, we need to talk about those at the session before so that we don't embarrass anybody. And that's what I think
Because their only option now is embarrass somebody or allow them to be appointed.
They're all going to be televised.
Yeah, I think because they're going to be televised, but it's not about embarrassing so much as they need to have a voice in that too. So I think, you know, when we, that's why it needs to be done ahead of time. Hey, if you're going to reject them, this, this says here, at least give in written, we're going to reject it. And then last, last, a couple of weeks ago, they didn't have a chance to come and advocate because traditionally appointees don't usually show up because we just approve them.
That's why we've been talking for two months about having those discussions.
Yeah, but you wanted to do it during briefing session and nobody was really watching anything.
It's, it's an open meeting.
Yeah, open meeting is different than being at televised where they can actually advocate.
Legally, it's not different. You can still do it.
Whatever. I, I, I agree with all that and I've, I've asked people to come when I did appointments to be here because I wasn't sure they were going to be approved so they could speak. And, and I get back to, you know, the Ben Burton thing. He was here. I think he spoke.
Right, I didn't ask Shelley to come because I didn't know she had to come and speak.
And, and, you know, but, but, but I, I did that as part of the appointments because I knew that some of them probably were not going to go along with everybody on the commission. And fortunately, you know, ended up with three votes anyway on that particular one.
My concern was that your appointment made an all-male board and I, we should be doing a better job of having equitable representation of our population. And so that was the reason for my vote.
Yeah, I know. You stood up and said you didn't want to vote for him because he was a man, which goes against our equal Yes, you did. I've got it on tape.
Excuse me, Commissioner.
And, and let me, let me say this, that that sort of violates our equal opportunity policy.
So, Commissioner, I hear two things here. So if we can address back to the policy that we're discussing. So two things. The first one is you want an opportunity, regardless of the backend, let's ignore that for a second. You want some kind of opportunity to give some feedback on what whoever the mayor brings forward. So you want whether, and you all can discuss that. So maybe the mayor puts them together. That's in your discussion items. You can give that feedback. That's, that's something that we can accomplish with, with a new policy. That's not an issue. The backend thing that Commissioner Butler brings up of we're nominating from the floor, while your opinion is that the statute doesn't apply, and I respect your opinion, that is, I read the bill from two thousand and eight and it does not have the limitation that it only applies to a certain form of government. And I've reviewed the legislative history. So the league misinterpreted it and when I called the league and asked them about that, they immediately changed. So the statute, the plain language of the statute, which is the rule of interpretation that we follow, is it just says if, if the setup where the mayor makes an appointment confirmed by the governing body. So in order to do the part that you would like, Commissioner Butler, and allow the nomination if it's refused, that is achievable as long as we get out of the statute. That's it. We can accomplish that if we charter out of the statute or if you change your ordinances so they no longer say mayoral appointment and you create a governing body process like the one we just talked about. You could do it that way as well. That's going to take a little bit longer because you would have to actually change the ordinances and as we've talked about, those are in all kinds of different locations. It's not impossible to do. It's just, we'll have to go through those and identify those spots that we would need to change it. So we can accomplish what, if, if the majority of the commission wants an opportunity to do that, we can accomplish that, the backend nomination from the floor, but that, that will have to deal with that statute and we'll have to charter out of it or change your process. So those are your options. And I think the first part, it sounds like we can work that into our agenda or work that into a policy in terms of that review, but it's the backside. It's the backend, the rejection scenario where we may not have clear guidance on the next step because of the, we'd have to have four of you who are willing to consider not vote tonight, a charter ordinance so that we could bring that to you for discussion. And then that would provide the opportunity to change the policy manual the way that you've described. So that's the guidance that we would need tonight to return with the charter ordinance.
Yeah, so we'll have to see if there's four to do that. But the other thing is none of this gives us enough time for June third. If the mayor keeps those, those nominations on the table, we'll have to have that resolution for the next meeting. for the next meeting, uh, to reject those two appointments.
Correct.
Right. We would follow states, we would be following state statute, then.
Right, because we don't, we don't have enough time to, to, uh, do it any other way.
And, and that's the mayor's decision whether or not to withdraw those appointments or to, to remain on the table. So, and, under our current system, in the future, that may not be the process.
I guess we, do we have three of us who want to have that resolution ready?
Yeah, yes, if we can't, in my mind, yes, if we can't, uh, change this thing in time, then we got to go that route.
And what would that resolution be?
So the statute requires if, that the resolution must declare that the appointee is unfit or unqualified for the office. It has to be a finding of the governing body, it does not have to give a reason for that, that's also been interpreted by the Attorney General. So it would just have, it, we'll say, here's what the law says, we're making a finding that so-and-so is unfit or unqualified to hold this position.
So the resolution, so, so let's, let's back up just a second, so, what, so the, the appointments that the commission rejected a couple of weeks ago, um, that was an invalid rejection of those appointees, right?
Correct.
Okay, so, as of, so the forty-five days we're talking about is, if, if the commission doesn't do anything, they'll, they'll go in, they'll be reappointed based on the fact that they haven't been approved by the commission. Right. So the resolution would be to go ahead and find those people unfit, for whatever reason, that will not be stated, apparently. Um, that's what, we're looking at resolution-wise, to, to do what we thought we did last meeting when we voted them down.
That's what the statute would require, yes.
Okay. Yes.
Yes, that's what we'll...
What is our, uh, option? Like, if we say no, what happens?
Sorry, Commissioner, no to...
To, uh, adopting the resolution.
Oh, well, it's a resol-, it's like any resolution, there'll be a vote on the resolution.
Like, uh, I mean...
Do there have to be two readings?
Like, what happens, does she just nominate, and I, I...
And then someone makes a motion for, uh, adoption of the resolution, and then that would be seconded, it'd be voted on by the body.
No, I don't mean the resolution, I mean, what happens if we didn't do, like, if it was voted down, if the resolution was voted down, what happens?
Well, then the appointment would be made.
But, but, but clearly, you know, the three of us that voted that down are more than likely going to approve the resolution, so that's just...
Well, we haven't voted yet.
I know, but, you know, it's a discussion thing, you know, you may as well just, you know, understand, I think there's three votes there, that's what we intended to do, we just have to do it the hard way now, instead of the easy way, because of legal interpretation.
So, either the mayor withdraws them, in which case, we don't have to do a resolution, if she doesn't, then we have to do the resolution.
But this was a discussion item, so can we still vote on it as a...
We're not going to vote tonight.
Just to tell her to bring it...
She needs to know if there's three commissioners, to know whether to put it on the agenda.
The right way to do this is to develop a new policy that takes over at the point at which the, this dissolved, this prohibited policy ends. And, so there's no gray area in between, there are no employ, uh, appointments being caught up in it, there's nobody being embarrassed. I mean, you're not budging an inch, but you expect me to budge? I mean, why?
Well, no, we'll just pass the resolution if you don't want to, that's...
I'm just saying, let's talk about how we can do this in a, in a, a, an organized way.
We just want to get out of this forty-five days. We have a time crunch. We need to get out of the forty-five days. Willing to do everything you said, we just need to take care of this forty-five day period.
So, so this is what it, what it boils down to. If you keep the two appointee, appointments on the agenda for next month that were invalidly voted down last month by the three of us, um, then someone's going to make a resolution to find those three, those people unfit, and there'll be three votes, and so they will be not affirmed. Or, you could just withdraw those two nominations, and, and that would be the end of this scenario.
I received Katie's email today about the possibility of, uh, the candidate withdrawing, or me withdrawing, and I've only been able to reach one of them, and that one person said they were willing to continue on. Um, so I, I haven't reached the other person. That's like, three hours I had to react from the time I got it, that said, are you willing to withdraw? And so, I'm still in that process, I haven't concluded anything.
Right, well, all this came up new, but, does she, is that a requirement that they agree, or can she simply withdraw them?
No, the mayor decides whether or not to withdraw the nomination, and I think what the mayor is saying, is my understanding, is she's consulting with the, with the nominee, whether they would like to be, to be considered a nomination.
I'm not going to, um, blindside them, I, these are...
No, 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 I just want to clarify, I just want to clarify, it's your decision, that's all.
Citizens in our community, and I won't do that.
Yeah, no, I just want to clarify, it's your decision, that's all.
Yes, and I, I'll state that again as well, Mayor, in case my communication wasn't clear, um, you, you don't have to have their consent, I mean, they, you can decide to withdraw on your own, within your own discretion.
The way I understood it, I could withdraw the nominations, or the people could withdraw their own, uh, for, themselves. And so, that's what I was, uh, pursuing this afternoon, before the meeting.
You get to make the ultimate decision, Mayor.
I understand.
And, and she, and what you were also alluding to, she wanted to see if they want to continue their position, and then keep them on there, was what she was waiting for.
Yes.
So either way, what I hear from, from the mayor is, um, she, if they are interested, she would like to go ahead and reappoint them, she's not going to take her own initiative to withdraw those nominations. So with that, you can move forward with the resolution or not. I am not in favor of, of the resolution.
So, sorry, Commissioner, please.
What else do you have?
That, so that's all we have for tonight. So, May seventeenth, we'll come back with first readings of the ordinances, which we covered first, and I think we have a good sense of what the commission wants to see there. I'll bring back a, the second, um, sorry, the first policy manual resolution, which is your procedure, you'll see that before June thirtieth. Work on, I guess we'll get some, as far as chartering out of the advisory board ordinance, I mean, that's something you can continue to think about, I don't hear that we're bringing back a charter ordinance to do that, but I did hear that on May seventeenth, you'd like to have draft resolutions, if these appointments continue, you'd like to have those available so that you are able, as a group, someone's able to make a motion for that, that night. So that would be a part of the May seventeenth meeting, if the mayor indicates that those...
Yeah, that resolution needs to be on the agenda, to be voted on.
It, it will be on the agenda as an appointment, because, but the resolution would be prepared, is what I'm hearing, have it prepared, so that the resolution may be adopted in order to turn down the appointment. I, I don't have any other, um, uh, comments, if there's anything else, you can let me know. Thank you for your feedback.
All right, and at this point, we will now receive public comment on this item of business. Um, each speaker will have five minutes and must stop talking when the timer sounds, we want to hear your comments on the item before we vote, we aren't voting, but this is the public comments, period. So if anyone wants to speak to the, uh, topic, please come forward.
Sorry, I put my name on there for you, Brenda, so, Monica McFarlane, two thirteen Parker. So, no matter if you go back to state statute, try and opt out of the charter, or whatever review process that you're going to use for candidates for your advisory boards, um, I implore that the commission actually, uh, adopt some, I guess, basic hiring guidelines and laws, kind of best practices. It's very concerning to me that there would be a pros-, review process where a phone call would be made to a candidate, and then would ask questions about that candidate's spouse, what they're doing for work, or whether or not they plan to run for office again. Inappropriate, not a way to choose your candidates. I feel like whatever questions you make, when you say whether or not they are fit for that job, and I know you don't have to state what those are, but they should be based upon actual qualifications of that candidate, and they should be ethical. And I have a real problem with some of those questions that were asked of my own husband. Thank you.
Thank you, Monica.
I'm Tom Hanson, uh, until recently, I'm, I was a member of the, um, Historic Resources Board, and my renomination was voted down by Commissioners Haddasal, Butler, and Mata at the last meeting. And I would very much like to state that if your reasons for voting me down currently are that I am unfit or unqualified, uh, as Ms. Jackson said, it's not necessary for you to expound on that, uh, determination, I would very much like to know why I'm unfit or unqualified, and not just because I don't vote the way you want me to. Our boards are volunteer, as you know, we work very hard, we do our own research, as you all do, and we are tied to a certain set of standards that we need to meet. Those standards are different than the standards that you need to meet. In fact, there are items that you can consider that we can't consider. So, of course, we understand that the board, that the commission can and very well may overrule what we have voted on. But we vote the way we are directed to, by the statutes that we are to consider. You vote the way you're directed to. The city boards should not be a direct representation of what you three commissioners think we should be voting. If you want to overturn us, great, but it doesn't mean that we shouldn't be voting with our own conscience and our own set of information. So, if you have a good reason that I'm unfit or unqualified, great, let me know. None of you have ever called me to discuss my appointment, I understand you, you provided that courtesy to McCharny and the other nominee, I've never had a call from you, so you don't know anything about me. I would probably posit that you've never watched an HRB meeting, or sat through an HRB meeting, to see why we vote the way we do. So, learn more about me, learn more about the way we vote as a board. I'm very disturbed that we lost a good member of our board solely based on the way you voted last time. Um, there was no reason for him to resign, he was a good member, he was, he's a good person, and he was so disgusted by your actions that he resigned our board. So, um, again, I don't see that not voting the way that you think I should be voting is a reason to consider me unfit or unqualified. Um, I've been on the board for three years, we've had some positive outcome, and we've denied some things. But I would say the same for you, you, you can pass things through, or you can deny them. So, consider that resolution very carefully, uh, when you consider whether somebody is unfit or unqualified. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you for coming forward, I'm sure that was difficult. Does anyone else wish to speak to the commission this evening? Okay, seeing no one, I will, uh, close.
Mayor, I just have one comment.
Yes.
Uh, there was a, I just wanted to know, with charter ordinances, is there a forty-five or sixty-day time when the public has to petition or has a chance? How does that work?
It's sixty days after publication of the se-, so you have to have first reading, then second reading, then you have publication after second reading, and then the public has sixty days after publication to file a protest to the charter ordinance, a protest petition, yeah.
And, and then after they do that, then what happens?
Well, there has to be determination that it's, it's valid, and you have, it, you know, that it was signed by...
And there's a more of a process, before it's actually gone.
Right, yes, yeah. So, there is a threshold the petition has to meet in terms of, um, being considered valid. Um, if that doesn't occur, then it automatically becomes the law on the sixty-first day.
Okay. What is a, what is a protest, is it petition? Is it, uh, just a piece of paper that you say that? Is it forty signatures? Is it, you get a, you have to be, get an attorney? How do you actually do a protest petition?
Well, the statute sets out the requirements for the protest petition, which I can get to you, it's also in our manual about the specifics, um, but we, there's not, the form, there's not a form in terms of like, we don't have a, a paper form, but it does have to meet the statute.
There's a statute.
And that it's a certain percentage of the electorate, that they have to actually be verified and those things, so, those things have to occur.
I just wondered what it was, I don't think, I don't recall seeing one.
I, I, we, we haven't had one, that I'm aware of, so...
Been a long time.
We don't have a form, but I can send you the requirement if you'd like, Mayor.
Well, just point out, I have this book that the League of Kansas Municipalities gave us, so if it's in there, you can just point me to it, thank you.
But that book's wrong. Only the one section.
Okay, is there an, uh, uh, anyone else? Lynda Cook, I appreciate you coming this evening, thank you. She was nominated to the library board, and I'm pleased that she succeeded in being placed on the library board, so thank you for coming, it was probably a wise thing.
Thank you.
Yeah, all right, thank you all for coming, and is there a...
Nope, just a call.
Just, we, we are...